All right. Good morning, councillors and all those who are present in chambers and those watching online. I would like to declare the meeting open at 9:31am on Monday the 23rd of June, and this is of course Redland City Council's special budget meeting. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge the Kwandamooka people who are the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, and also pay my respects to their elders past and present, and extend that respect to any other Indigenous Australians who are present here today. I would like to remind all that this meeting is being recorded in audio and video as well as being livestreamed online. Councillors are reminded that parliamentary privilege does not extend to this chamber as it does for state and federal parliamentarians. And you are reminded to be cognisant of this in any comments which you may make during the course of this meeting. I also like to remind councillors to use the microphone when speaking, and for any councillors or officers who are attending virtually to please use the mute button when not speaking. In the event of an evacuation, I would ask that you remain calm and follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors on your left, and then down the stairwell to exit onto Bloomfield Street. All members of the public present at the meeting must, not without the prior approval of the chairperson, make any audio or video recording, or take any photographs. Remain quiet and not disturb the meeting in any way. Not bring into the meeting any signs, placards, or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with any person present. Be suitably dressed, and turn all mobile devices to silent mode, and leave the meeting to take any calls. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to warn a member of the public present at a meeting who is not complying with any of these requirements, and may, with or without such warning, require the person to leave the meeting and not return for such period as the chairperson decides. This period may include future meetings. I move to agenda item number two, which is leave of absence, and I've not been advised of any leave of absence. I would now like to remind councillors to sign the attendance sheet for today's special budget meeting, which can be found in diligent boards, and this must be completed before the meeting concludes. Agenda item number three, which is a declaration of prescribed conflict of interest and declarable conflict of interests. Councillors are reminded of their obligations and responsibilities in relation to a councillor's prescribed conflict of interest and declarable conflict of interest at a meeting. Details of these responsibilities are also outlined in the agenda. Please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting of council. These declarations can also be made at any time throughout the meeting. Just a reminder that under section 150EF of the Act, the conflict of interest provisions do not apply for ordinary business matters solely relating to the making or levying of rates and charges or the adoption of a budget. And I have not been advised of any conflicts. Now, I will move on to some comments that I wish to make before I hand over to the CEO. So I'm going to provide some comment in relation to the mechanics of the budget. So I'm going to say a few words about the budget process, and how council gains its revenue, and how council expends it. And I'm doing this from the record, hoping to provide information to the general public who may have access to this recording. Firstly, I would like to thank council officers and council management for the work that they have put into developing the proposed 2526 budget. It's no mean feat for a large organisation to create an annual budget, particularly in a political environment. And I give particular thanks to the Chief Financial Officer, Sandra Bridgeman, and the Financial Controller, Peter Patterson, and the entire finance team for their diligence during this period. So just to recap, thank you to everyone involved. I know this is a massive annual process, and it requires a great deal of effort and work. The budget process involves consideration by all 11 Redland City councillors, and each has a unique perspective and approach to their role and representation. In this council, and in this process, the mayor is one of 11, and does not have further insight, input, or influence. The majority determines the direction of the budget, as it determines the strategic direction and the projects council undertakes. This is a council budget, and it is important to acknowledge that individual perspectives should be respected in a democratic process. Council must adopt a budget before the 1st of August annually in accordance with section 170 of the Local Government Regulation 2012. Council gains its revenue from a range of avenues. The things that you see included in your rates notice, which include the general rates, with 84% coming from residential property owners, 8% from commercial and industrial, and 8% from other properties. Water and wastewater charges, waste collection charges, separate charges, and it also gains revenue from fees, federal and state government grants and subsidies and contributions, interest on cash investments, and other services including sales of services and goods. This is how council spends that collected revenue. We are a local government area of 537 square kilometres and 335 kilometres of coastline. We have about 167,000 residents, and council services 12 mainland suburbs and six residential islands. Council maintains more than 1,300 kilometres of roads. It delivers clean drinking water to more than 65,000 connected properties. It collects and treats wastewater from more than 56,000 connected properties, maintains a network of more than 1,200 kilometres of pipes across the city via more than 140 pump stations and seven treatment plants. And council treats 1.27 billion litres of wastewater each year. Council collects and manages waste and recycling each year. It empties around 3.2 million, in fact, curbside bins. It supports about 70 local sport and recreation clubs, operates six libraries, mows more than 19,000 hectares, and provides a performing arts centre, art galleries, animal shelter, and Redland Indigenous Scapes Centre. It also keeps the community safe, as we have recently experienced through natural disaster management. So all of that, again, is no mean feat. To do this, council has 1,103 employees and more than 437,000 assets with a value of more than $3 billion. The CEO is the person in charge of operational council, and with all of those stats provided for everyone, I'm now going to hand over to CEO Louise Rusin to speak to and present the proposed 2526 Redland City Council budget.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's very interesting when you hear all of those stats and figures about the size and breadth of council, and it makes me very proud every single day to know that I'm fortunate enough to be the CEO of an organisation that delivers so many services for the community by so many wonderful people. So thank you very much, Mayor. I'd also like to acknowledge Amanda Pafumi, who's our General Manager of Organisational Services, who heads up Organisational Services where the financial teams sit, Sandra Bridgeman, our CFO, for the great work that she has done, and the entire finance team who have been living and breathing our budget, I think, right around the year, all day, all night. So thank you very much to the team. And now officially, good morning, everybody. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, councillors. Good morning to officers, to members of the public, to those in the room and those online. This budget has been prepared once again in the midst of a very challenging economic climate, and I think this was the message that you were given last year, and it's the message again that we're preparing for you this year. The budget is shaped, however, by the recognition that many in our community are also feeling the impacts of the harsh economic climate. And I know that our mayor and councillors have been in many, 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 many hours of deliberations, workshops, and budget considerations, and are very cognisant of the community impact at this point, and have delivered a budget that they believe is responsible and accountable. It's my first budget as CEO, as the mayor has mentioned, but it's also the end of the first full financial year for this council, which was sworn in 14 months ago. I know our mayor and councillors have taken a good look at how our revenue is invested, and they've made some hard decisions to ensure that we will remain a financially responsible local government. In every budget, there are always trade-offs that have to be balanced to match community expectations, affordability, and efficiency. It is a very, very complex role for our mayor and councillors to be able to develop a budget, and to have all of those considerations taken into account. And I do recognise and acknowledge the very difficult role that you're all placed in when it comes time to delivering a budget. No other business runs the breadth of services that is provided by local government, and you heard a lot of the stats and figures that the mayor has spoken to. We have depth, we have breadth, and we have volume. From water and sewage services to the city, land planning, animal management, disaster management, libraries, art galleries, roads, park installation, maintenance, and so much more. Every day, in every way, council makes sure that the city moves efficiently and effectively. Unlike other local governments, though, we have some special considerations here. The mayor spoke about our beautiful coastline, the 335 kilometres of coastline, and our six beautiful island communities that boast natural beauty, enviable lifestyle, and are a tourism drawcard. However, with all of that beauty, and our growing island populations, there are challenges that are faced, and we continue to work with our island communities in a coordinated and collaborative response. Transport and accessibility continues to be significant factors that impact both livability and economic development for the islands. The movement of people, goods, and essential services is reliant on ferry and barge services, and these are often costly, time-consuming, and can be very much underappreciated until you have an impact, say, for a cyclone, and then you realise how difficult it can be to get to the islands. These logistical constraints in term can limit the growth of small businesses and create challenges for supply chains, and make it more expensive to deliver public services to the islands. Council recognises these factors, and has implemented a range of initiatives to support our island communities, including the appointment of a dedicated Simbi coordinator to act as a central point for the residents and for stakeholders, the establishment of the island small business supply chain programme to support local businesses in navigating freight procurement and distribution services unique to island life. These initiatives aim to build capacity, capability, and enhance local economic resilience, and ensure the community has an ongoing voice in planning and decision-making. To ensure the islands thrive, coordinated investment and policy support from both the Queensland and Australian government is essential. Recognising the regional-like challenges faced by our island populations, council continues to advocate for the islands, particularly in terms of regional status, as this would open the doors to extra funding streams and targeted support, which is much needed for our island communities and for council. By working together on long-term place-based solutions, we can unlock the potential of these communities and deliver outcomes that are better for current and future generations. Cost escalation is a widespread problem for all councils and for our council. Construction costs and depreciation expenses are escalating well beyond inflation. Council is also feeling the impacts of funding from other levels of government not keeping up with inflation. We continue to advocate for the restoration and maintenance of the local government financial assistance grants to at least 1% of Commonwealth taxation revenue. Without appropriate funding, these grants, council needs to generate additional revenue to maintain community infrastructure, levels of service, and meet the needs and expectations of community. There's also been a sharp rise in costs as council managers arrange a range of additional responsibilities that are passed down from other levels of government without funding support. You may hear of this term being cost-shifting from time to time. Local government provides about 33% of the community's services, despite receiving just 3% of direct government taxation revenue. Increased depreciation costs, $14 million higher than the current financial year's original budget, have also had a major impact on this year's budget. Council has seen a sharp increase in the cost to manage our city's waste, which is set to rise 39 million of operating expenses in 2526. There have also been significant cost increases for green waste processing, as composters in in South East Queensland modernise their facilities to meet stricter environmental standards set by the Queensland Government. All of these factors have made this one of the hardest years to balance the budget while not paying or passing on the full increases to ratepayers. And I know this has been something that our councillors and our mayor have been dealing with and struggling to come up with a great budget outcome for many months now. To offset these factors, through our budget deliberations, we have reassessed our spending and identified about twenty-three million dollars in organisational efficiencies, mitigation measures, and savings. And this has reduced what would have been an eighteen percent rate increase. Council has an expenditure review committee, which has gone line by line through the operational budgets for every area of council, meeting with managers, looking at how we can do things smarter, better, to offset the budget pressures, as much as possible to minimise the rate's impact on the community while still providing that valued level of service. For example, we are planning to defer spending on some significant projects and procurement processes, spreading the cost across multiple years to ensure savings are made. Council is very fortunate to have a first-class grants team who seek out opportunities for grants and subsidies from every other level of government, and they have been very successful in doing so. There have been more impacts, though, than just cost increases, and if I look back on the year, tropical cyclone Alfred in March is recalled for being, having a significant impact on our city. In the preparation, response, and recovery phases, council through our local disaster coordination centre ensured our city was well-prepared and could quickly recover. And we are still very much in recovery phase. Our offices, indoor, outdoor, are working through not only business as usual but are very much still in recovery from the cyclone. During the cyclone, we distributed one hundred and fifty thousand sandbags. Two thousand three hundred streets were cleared of tree debris, which occurred in a very short time, only in a couple of days. One thousand three hundred and thirty-four tree requests were actioned since March, which is about thirty per business day. More than two hundred parks were cleared and made safe, and eleven hundred hectares of roadsides and parks were cleared from debris. I was so proud of how quickly and efficiently our team pulled together to make this happen. I know, Mayor, you were working very long hours during our disaster response as well, and that was greatly appreciated, as was the work in recovery led by the deputy mayor, and the work of councillors supporting our offices was greatly valued. I would like to say that while people were responding to the cyclone, it's important to know that the people delivering the service also live in the community. So our officers who were helping our community, who didn't have power and didn't have water, our officers were also in that same circumstance. And I stood beside some of our people in our I triple C, our contact centre, who were taking calls from distressed community members, and those staff members also were without water, without power, and were dealing with sandbagging around their own homes. It's an absolutely remarkable leaning into the community that was done by all of council. Despite the increased and unexpected costs of managing this weather event, council will not be imposing levies on ratepayers to finance the cyclone recovery. I'd also like to acknowledge council's pension rebates, which are more generous than those offered by our neighbours. Rebates will be maintained at three hundred and thirty-five dollars per year for a full pensioner and one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents for a part pensioner. Council has kept the general rates revenue increase to about two dollars thirteen per week for a category one A owner-occupied property with a valuation equal to the median valuation. The budget presented for adoption today is a responsible budget that ensures the ten measures of financial sustainability are met as set out in the Queensland Government Financial Management Sustainability Guideline twenty twenty-four, with a minimum general rate increase just enough to cover rising costs and ensure council maintains a sustainable local government. But even at that rate, it will be a very tough year for council in delivering the services that our community expects and has come to value from living in this community. Looking at it in detail, this year's budget delivers a capital expenditure programme valued at more than one hundred and fifty-one point six-eight million. Almost one-third of council's capital spend for twenty twenty-five twenty-six, or forty-eight point two-seven million, will go towards water, waste, wastewater projects, to ensure that council maintains its high standard of service delivery to the city. The budget also allocates forty-three point three-two million for road reseals, reconstruction, and upgrade projects. This includes an upgrade of Kinross Road at Thornlands to widen the road with shared paths, roundabouts, and a new intersection at Boundary Road. More than thirteen point six-eight million will be spent on road reseals and resurfacing, including specific projects on West Mount Cotton Road at Mount Cotton, Giles Road at Redland Bay, and Randall Road at Berkdale. Green sealing of roads is just another one of the projects in the twenty twenty-five twenty-two six budget that will benefit island communities on Redlands' coast. For the southern Moreton Bay Islands, this includes funding for a new building for a community youth centre, much needed on MacClay Island. On North Stradbroke Island, Munjiriba, there is funding towards the renewal of the Amity Point Swimming Enclosure, a drainage renewal on Kennedy Drive near Point Lookout Surf Life Saving Club. Residents on southern Moreton Bay Islands will also benefit from a further investment in the Wynham Creek Priority Development Area. This development is one of council's catalyst projects that is set to transform Redland Bay into a vibrant waterfront precinct, as well as an effective transport and gateway to the islands. The funding allocated for the twenty twenty-five twenty-two six budget will progress delivery of a boat ramp, parking, bus stops, parks, and roads. The Wynham Creek PDA forms part of a seventeen point seven-five million commitment to transport infrastructure. More than four million has been allocated to the footpath expansion and gaps programme that will contribute to a more walkable, bike-friendly, and connected Redlands' coast. Council has budgeted to progress the design of the Berkdale Community Precinct Master Plan elements and undertake a referral under the Environment Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act. The budget is investing seventeen point five-four million in open spaces, parks, and conservation. This is on top of the thirty-six point two million council will be maintaining, will be spending maintaining, three hundred-plus parks and civic open spaces across the city. Mowing alone is a massive undertaking, with council allocating more than five point five million for mowing contractors. And as you heard from the mayor, we have substantial areas of parks, nineteen thousand hectares of parks, sports fields, roads, and public utility land. There is five point three-six million allocated in the budget for marine and foreshore projects, and this includes funding towards the construction of a new boat ramp and parking at southern Redland Bay and a replacement floating pontoon at Victoria Point. One of the initiatives council adopted last year to help mitigate costs was the Digital Transformation Programme that underpins operational efficiencies within the organisation and makes it easier for the community to access a suite of digital services. Significant work has been done in this space at a comparatively cheaper cost for our council than we've seen at many of our supporting peer councils, and the work has been first-rate. Our community will see the benefits of this work in times to come as we do much of the embedding work in the early phases of this project. Eight point five million has been allocated to the initiative in this year's budget, which will allow the programme to roll out and to continue. The past financial year has been a year of delivery for our community, and I would like to share some of the great work undertaken by council in the twenty twenty-four twenty-two five financial year. This is by no means an exhaustive list, but exemplifies the broad scope of services delivered and the amazing work by our officers. We completed stage one of the Wellington Street Panorama Drive upgrade, which included the duplication of a two-kilometre stretch from two lanes to four, intersection upgrades, and a shared cycling and pedestrian pathway. We launched a new online booking system, Bookable, which enhances customer service across sixteen thousand five hundred annual bookings of our ninety-five venues, which includes our libraries and indigenous scapes. We have filled more than twelve hundred potholes and road sweepers, hi-ray. Road sweepers have covered about ten thousand kilometres of road. Redlands Art Gallery Exhibition Programme showcased eighteen exhibitions and nineteen, ninety-seven public programmes in various locations in Cleveland and across the Redlands' coast. Very, very proud of our geographic information team, geographic information systems team. They won the collaboration category at the Local Government Managers Australia Queensland Awards for work in updating flooding mapping and modelling and developing an app and other systems to help in the preparation and recovery from tropical cyclone Alfred. Wonderful achievement. Council's crews and contractors mow the parks and the roadsides and maintain more than three hundred and sixty-five hectares of landscaping in parks and streets. We are creating a better RPAK with a forecourt transformation that will create a more welcoming experience and a safer experience for our visitors and for our residents. Forty-six thousand eight hundred tonnes of general waste, eight thousand five hundred tonnes of recycling, and ten thousand tonnes of green waste have been collected through our curbside services. Council is progressing work on stage one of the Kapalaba revitalisation project, which will include a new community centre and contemporary arts facilities. The Kapalaba Library successfully transitioned to a temporary location at the Kapalaba Shopping Centre, gaining fifteen hundred new members in just three months. We are undertaking community-focused engagement to shape our new corporate plan, a very exciting initiative that we have started and that will be carrying forward into the new financial year. And this will reflect our residents' aspiration and guide council's operational planning, business priorities, and budget alignment over the next five years. So much work by so many. I'm so very, very proud. In closing, Mayor and councillors, I'd like to commend the diligence of council's executive leadership team. They are an amazing group of people, and they have put forward a responsible budget recommending multiple options to councillors and their deliberation, for their deliberations, and striking the right balance between ensuring financial sustainability and covering our costs so that council can adopt a responsible budget that is respectful of the community's needs in a challenging economic environment. I would like to thank our mayor and our councillors for their guidance and their support through this process. Councillors have spent many hours, many days, and many questions provided to officers with our councillors developing and preparing the budget over what's been about an eight-month timeframe, from setting the financial strategy and determining the capital plan, through to workshopping the whole budget with councillors and everything contained in the nearly three hundred pages put forward for adoption today. I'd like to thank all of our council employees who have been part of this budget process and who will live with this budget through the next period of time. It will be a challenge, but we have got this, and we will be able to deliver wonderful things for our community. As CEO, I'm very proud of what we've achieved, for the dedication of the people that who work for Redland City Council and who work for our community. And on that note, I'd like to thank them for their impressive work, not only for mitigating costs, looking for efficiencies, and for their ongoing commitment to what will be making Redland City a wonderful place to work, live, and play. Thank you, Mayor and councillors.
Thank you, CEO. So with that now, I think everyone should have a fairly comprehensive view of the breadth of council's work across the local government area and the challenges that it faces as we move into the new financial year. As previous special budget meetings, standing orders have been suspended to allow each, or have to be suspended to allow each councillor five minutes to speak to the budget, and this is your opportunity to provide your thoughts, positive and constructive, on the overall budget package table at today's meeting. When we suspend standing orders, I would like to exclude sections eight point one point one, eight point one point three, eight point one point five, eight point one point six, and eight point one point eight, which relate to councillor conduct and the unsuitable meeting conduct process. Please remember that section seven point five point six of councillor's standing, of council's standing orders will be suspended, and no debate may occur during this period. Can I have a mover and seconder required for this motion? Moved by councillor Bishop, seconded by councillor Hughes. I put the motion. Those in favour? That's councillor Boglari, councillors Mitchell, councillors Gole, Hewlett, Rendles, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop, and myself. Councillors against? Councillor Tolty? Motion is carried. So I now invite councillors to speak to the budget in order of division. If you'd like to go forward. And councillor Boglari of Division One, would you like to speak to the budget?
Oh, thank you very much. Budget Day is a point in time when revenue and expenses are calculated and adopted for the following year to continue business as usual, delivering services and projects according to the contents of the corporate plan. The mayor has outlined where revenue is raised and where expenses happen, and the CEO has highlighted the amazing job our staff does and highlights from this budget. And yes, it is exciting when councillors see these short-term goals of projects that we have advocated for being included in their division. However, for many years, I have spoken about the importance of long-term sustainability rather than just a point in time, and I would like to take my time today, rather than discussing the dollars and percentages and highlights in the budget, to discuss my concerns. I can list at a later date citywide and divisional projects of interest. It is the present and looming challenges that have not been factored into our strategies that prevents me from supporting today's current budget, as I am not satisfied these ongoing impacts and risks to both financially and council's resources have been sufficiently considered for longer-term sustainability of council. This year more than ever, there appears to be increased media coverage of the various increasing challenges all Queensland local councils are facing, and Redon City Council is no different. With the impacts of these challenges on council's financial position and acknowledging identified risks arising from both global, especially over the weekend, and local pressures, including costs and availability of resources, market pressures, increasing impacts from climate change with extreme weather events, costs evident in our recent cyclone event, population growth, council's commitment to multiple capital and operational expenditure programmes, which have placed increased pressure on our financial position, developments imposed on us by the state government and cost-shifting, required substantial work on ageing infrastructure, the proposed escalation in debt levels associated costs of servicing this debt, and serviceability challenges. It is critical that council takes a proactive approach in assessing council's financial position and financial trajectory, including all projects and their funding, and exploring measures that can be implemented to strengthen sustainability. Future projects, as outlined in the corporate plan, need to not only be progressed but financial impacts understood and included in our financial figures. One concern that is vital to council and the sustainability of the city's health, and I know you'd all be disappointed if I didn't mention it for about the twelfth year in a row, as I have mentioned this for over a decade in budget speeches, is the identified ageing water infrastructure across the city that requires substantial capital works. I have mentioned the need for sufficient funding and resources at each budget for a decade, as having clean running water is imperative to the health of our city. The funding of these works remains a grave concern to me, as I feel it is a ticking time bomb with an unknown multimillion-dollar financial impact that is yet to be identified and placed in future planning. The CEO and the mayor mentioned the uniqueness of Redlands, and while beautiful and valued, our uniqueness also brings challenges. And once again, I would also like to bring the project of the Simbi Master Plan, which I have also mentioned for several years, and I would like to see that started so that we know the financial costs that we are going to predict for our islands. As Redland City Council has a limited rate base with the pressure being on our residential rates, and I think the mayor or the CEO just mentioned eighty-four percent of our revenue from those rates, unlike other councils, we don't have the large industry and the rate categories to offset our residential rates. Redlands relies on its residential rate base for operating revenue, and the impact on our residents must be acknowledged when considering rate rises. When there is a rate rise, it compounds over the years, which is why this year I have discussed with councillors using a deficit to relieve the burden on the rate payer while still raising the desired revenue needed for delivering our business as usual and projects. I usually speak against deficits as they are unsustainable. However, Redlands has had deficits except for about three or four years for nearly twenty years, and one more year would give relief to our residents while we consider the financial information that will be forthcoming with all the present reviews. The reviews which are being undertaken presently and I hope will be finished this year is the mayor's efficiency and structure review. There will be a complete review of rating categories. There is very excitedly a review of water and waste infrastructure, and there is a current review of the corporate plan. Priority projects could change which will have financial impacts and I do urge residents to be involved. Throughout the coming year, this these reviews will increase our knowledge on future challenges and assist us in budget preparations for next year. My position on the audit and risk also gives me a greater insight into the financial position of council, and there has been identified risks to do with possible failure to maintain, renew and expand assets due to affordability and deliverability. There has financial impacts, unknown issues and poor service outcomes. There's also a risk of reputational damage and significant financial loss. Again, I stress councillors need to be aware of and consider all financial risks, including current asset standards requiring works. So as councillors, we can make decisions to mitigate these risks. Given these risks, it is critical that council takes a proactive approach in assessing council's financial position and financial trajectory, including all projects and exploring measures to strengthen sustainability. I was disappointed in March that my notice of motion to council for a comprehensive financial review to ensure-
Councillor, sorry, excuse me, you've reached time.
Oh, have I? Okay, I'll go down to, I would like to encourage councillors that now is the time to stop and take stock. I would also just like if with your indulgence to take a moment to thank officers for all their work in presenting to councillors and, as the CEO said, patiently replying to endless questions. Their dedication and their service to the community and the pride they take in their work is evident to everyone and we appreciate your efforts. I encourage councillors today to pause as the rate increases compound over the years on our residents, and I cannot support a rate rose so much greater than the Redden City Council blended CPI of three point nine five. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Boglari. Councillor Mitchell. So councillor Mitchell of division two.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, colleagues and members of the community. I'm deeply grateful to live in a community that enjoys the lifestyle that we have and the peace that we have and we're envied around the world. The developing of the budget has been complex and demanding. I appreciate the dedication of those councillors who have contributed meaningfully and together will own the process. For my part, I can say I've actively proposed ideas for revenue sharing, improved efficiencies, reduce unnecessary spending and to invest in our future strategically. Ideas, not complaints. I do acknowledge that asking residents to shoulder a seven point eight nine percent minimum general rate increase is difficult. However, I promise that these funds are essential to meet the community's expectation of council for services, infrastructure and indeed for the long term sustainability. Families and youth have expressed a desire for Redlands to be seen as a vibrant and forward looking city. They seek investment in local employment, progressive projects, a prosperous future for all the generations. We must ensure the city isn't left behind, but is instead positioned as a leader in innovation and opportunity. My view, however, is that without urgent reform in infrastructure and service funding at the state and federal levels, councils will and do face an increasingly unsustainable budget pressure. Federal and state governments take a whopping ninety-seven percent of tax revenue, leaving councils fighting over the scraps with only three percent. We deliver the lion's share of infrastructure. To add insult to injury, Redlands has received the lowest per capita funding for community infrastructure from the state federal governments of any South East Queensland council. Our state and federal members need to fix this quickly. Without reform, local communities are under real threats and we must advocate for fair and ongoing funding. Despite that, our future is still enviable. We're boxing well above our weight. We can look forward to delivering this year on the operational and capital plans that we see before us. By way of example, the Community Safety Survey completed last year provided some evidence based actions of how it can be progressed. I was disappointed that my proposal for a community safety level levy wasn't accepted by councillors that may have brought forward those things like lighting and cameras a little faster, but I appreciate the majority view. The community can expect better services, access and more efficient council with our continued strong investment in digital infrastructure, the hardware and software and the integration thereof. We will continue to invest strongly in sport and recreation and tourism, including the Heinman Road Sports Precinct and the Amity Point Swim Enclosure, a hundred thousand dollars, Cleveland Aquatic Centre, another two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, amongst many items. Economic development, a major project investment is quite strong. I'm thrilled that a supercharged Cleveland Town Centre project is going to be delivered alongside Kapalabar Town Centre, Wyndham Creek, Heinman Road, the Berkdale Community Precinct and Toon to Harbour should all progress over the year. Transportation reform is front and centre. The Cleveland Local Area Transport Plan, active travel strategy, parking and access strategies are all coming forward over the next few months and will transform our city with the appropriate investment. I'm proud also to have strongly influenced pedestrian safety and active transport spending. Bringing forward of an additional two point three million dollars in the footpath gap programme is something I'm particularly proud of. So in conclusion, I'd really like to thank the CEO, finance staff, the ELT. You've been there for us throughout this process, you've asked all the questions, you've provided all the information we've needed. Every councillor has had that opportunity and should be comfortable today. We're fortunate to live in a community that's admired around the world. It is our shared responsibility in this room to help ensure that our city does remain the livable, sustainable city it is and is also full of opportunities. So let's work together today to deliver a budget that reflects these values and meets the needs of our residents today, but also sets us up for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mitchell. Councillor Gole, division three.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues, thank you, officers and to the public watching at home. Eight months worth of work, going backwards and forwards, asking questions, seeking answers, looking for efficiencies culminates into today. Every councillor's had the opportunity to ask questions, take part, look for solutions and come up with what is a solid budget that, under the Local Government Act, we have to deliver. I just want to touch on a couple of things though. So across, there's absolutely no denying that the federal government rakes in a lot of dollars. And local governments don't get their fair slice of that pie. And we won't know what cost of living pressures and relief measures will be in place until tomorrow from the state. So in essence, we've kind of jumped the gun. We actually don't know what the state's going to do to help residents in that cost of living relief. But across Queensland, many councils are under financial pressure and have responded to introducing separate levies for waste, infrastructure, environmental programmes and even capital works to deal with rising operational costs. Others are carrying budget deficits, passing on higher financial burdens to residents just to maintain core services. In contrast, how we worked, Redland City Council has held the line. We have not carried a deficit, as being suggested, and we've resisted applying separate levies, choosing instead to manage our finances through careful budgeting, operational efficiencies and long term financial planning. As the CEO noted during the internal briefings, without the extensive work undertaken by council officers and elected representatives over eight months, this is eight months of invested time, Redlands could have faced a rate increase as high as eighteen percent. That figure reflects the scale of the financial pressure we were under, driven by inflation, state government cost shifting, rising construction and service delivery costs and population growth. I want to be clear, I hold great concerns for the organisation. The fact we were staring down an eighteen percent rate rise, if not for extraordinary internal efforts, shows just how fragile the balance is. We're doing everything we can to avoid passing the cost burden on to residents, but that sustainability is becoming harder to maintain. Councillors like Logan, Townsville and Toowoomba have introduced separate levies in response to similar challenges. While those decisions may suit their financial models, Redlands has taken a different path, delivering stability and fairness for our community without resorting to deficit budgets or hidden charges. By not introducing separate levies or carrying a deficit, Redlands is protecting rate payers from financial shock, maintaining transparency and ensuring every dollar is accountable. But this has not come without pressure and it is imperative that the state and federal governments acknowledge and support councils before responsible management becomes impossible to sustain. This isn't good governance, it's the result of long hours, difficult decisions and a clear commitment to serving the public in the most responsible way possible. We face very, very challenging times, both nationally and globally. We've seen what escalated on the weekend. That will have impacts across the world and more specifically here in the Redlands. We are facing some very, very tough times. And the mayor's spot on, if we don't have a review and look at how we can readjust, then those times can get tougher and tougher for people locally. Now, as it stands, the work that we've conducted will help pave the future. But it's going to be tough and I make no bones about it. We are facing right now some of the most strategic implications worldwide that will impact this country to no end based on economies where the large majority of our services are imported from overseas. Our goods and services come from overseas. Shipping lanes will be held up, flights will be held up. Things will happen that will impact our economy and it will hit us right here in the heart of the Redlands. And I talk about the heart because we are the heart of South East Queensland. And right now, there's not one person around this room who hasn't worked diligently to try to find the best way forward. Now, whether this budget today gets up or goes down, it doesn't mean we will stop working to deliver an outcome because we have to under the Local Government Act.
You're a time councillor.
Thank you, Mayor. We have not committed to working to support our community in such a way where we don't deliver. We have to deliver something. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gole. Councillor Hewlett, division four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the presentation by the CEO. I thought she covered everything brilliantly, so extremely well done. I'd also like to acknowledge councillor Mitchell's comments as well about the how blessed we are to live in this area because I've lived in Victoria Point for over thirty years now and I've just, every day I thank God that I'm living in a place in a first world country that holds these wonderful services. And when I talk about services, I know every councillor in this room really is considerate and compassionate for their community. They all fight for their community, they support their community. There's not one in this room that doesn't love their community. And although we may have different opinions and different arguments of what we think are important, I think as a team we're working extremely well. I'd like to pay credence to the mayor, who I think has led the city extremely well this year in a very difficult circumstance with TC Alfred and other circumstances, so I congratulate her on this last year. I guess people are doing it tough. Cost of living is at an all time high. The only thing that's come down that I can think of is public transport to these fifty cent fares, but the cost of mortgages, the cost of construction, the cost of rent, like the average person's paying six hundred and fifty to seven hundred dollars a week for a three bedroom house. I mean, you know, that's more than a lot of people are actually taking home each week and it's quite confronting when you think about it. The other side of that is, I guess, we live in a very compassionate community. There's so much support out there in the Redlands community. You've got people like Star Transport, Night Ninjas, Lighthouse Care, the church down in Beveridge Road, Champion Church. There's so many community support and council themselves. I know every employee in this council love their community. There's not one guy out there digging a trench or doing something that doesn't care about what he's doing for our community. And that's where it all flows from, just the heart we have for our city. We all love it, we're all concerned of what the cost of living is doing to our residents, but at the same time, we have enormous costs imposed on us. I recall when I first got into council in twenty twenty twelve, I kept saying to myself when I was outside council, why are we doing that? Why are we doing that? Why is that costing so much to do that? It wasn't until I got into council that I realised we are governed by so many regulatory instruments that we just can't say, why can't we do that? Why can't we do that? Because most of the stuff we've got to comply to is either state legislation or to a lesser degree federal, and it runs what we do and how we do it. We've got to meet, in private enterprise, I was so used to saying, let's get that done, let's get that done. It doesn't work that way in council. And that alone puts a massive impost on council. And all the things that we do every year, people don't see a lot of it because it's underground. Water, sewage, as councillor Boglari is always alluding to. A lot of this stuff you don't see and it's massive expenditure. You're talking, if we imagine us as a giant household, we have masses and masses of expenses and we have the expertise at office at elected, what do you call it, executive council representatives, plus down to service managers, group managers, every person in the street. They have an expertise on how to deliver, when to deliver. Our procurement, I hate it when people say in council, oh, they're charging more because they're council. Our procurement process is second to none. I wish I could buy stuff at the same price council buys them for. People just don't realise what a great job this council is doing and there is a cost to that. So I want to move forward, just thank everybody involved in council. Councillors and every councillor employed in this council, what they've done this year, including the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hewlett. Councillor Rendles, division five.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of the ELT in bringing this budget together and particularly the work of the CEO, CFO and finance team. As noted earlier, for an organisation of this size and complexity, this is a mammoth task. Thank you. I also acknowledge the commitment of my fellow divisional councillors. While I have financial experience in senior government and corporate positions, this is only the second local government budget that I and the mayor have been involved in, the first coming a few short months after the election. Even though that one delivered a five point one percent general rate increase, I seconded and spoke to the last year's budget because I wanted to support the mayor in her first term. To maintain and expand on the existing level of services, this budget provides a seven point eight nine percent general rate increase with substantial increases in levies and charges, twenty-seven percent environmental and coastal management, eighty-five percent landfill remediation, eleven percent SES, twelve percent fixed water. The increased bottom line for many rate payers will be around ten to eleven percent. While separate levies, fees and charges provide a transparent indication of costs, I'm pleased that we haven't taken any more on because they operate in a regressive manner and do not impact the total bottom line in rates and charges. Moving cost and services from general rates to lot based fees reduces the overall cost for higher valued properties but increases costs for properties below the general rate threshold. This general rate increase is two hundred and thirty-two percent, more than double the average over the last five budgets of the previous council. Why was a council comprising many of the same councillors as today but under a different mayor, an acting mayor, able to better manage rate increases than this council? I take on board the issues about costs. Is this budget the responsibility of the ELT? No. Is this budget addressing the priority for all residents? Is this budget addressing the priority for all residents across the city? I'm not sure. Is this budget fully addressing the priorities for residents of Division Five and the adjoining areas to the south of the city? No. So why are we in this situation? There are three key factors. Number one, budget process. The current process adjusts the budget to reflect the increased cost of services and then prioritises funding for new services and capital projects. While they're internal efficiency targets, this is a top-down approach. In the first budget meeting in December, I proposed an alternative identifying what we are able to spend, the way many government agencies and corporates set their budget, and then prioritising what we can afford to provide within this amount. This would have put our current spending under closer scrutiny. The bottom-up approach may be adopted for future budget processes pending the review. Number two, local efficiency opportunities. Residents and councillors routinely identify local opportunities that are not action. For example, the septic system at Russell Island Rec World has not worked since last September, it clearly needs to be replaced, not continually spending up to a third to half of the cost of the replacement on continued pumpouts. I propose to council, consider, consider the option of a sawmill on council land to reduce the cost of green waste management, create local employment and improve environmental sustainability. Not supported. Three, leadership and engagement. This is the key ingredient. Irrespective of how good the individual players of a team are, and I fully respect the commitment and passion of our fellow councillors, they need a good captain to achieve their potential. The mayor has not brought councillors together to identify priorities and review.
Councillor, I'll draw your attention excuse point of order.
Thank you councillor Boglari. Would you like to identify the point of order?
I'm trying to find which one it is.
May I suggest eight point one point eight?
That's, that's the one then. Eight point one point eight, eight point one point eight. A councillor must not make personal reflections on or refute improper motives to another councillor or local government employee.
Okay, I will withdraw that, my apologies. We should have come together early after the new term to look at a more close review of current spending priorities. This should have occurred in the first few months. As a group, we sometimes spend more time considering flagpoles than the red flags popping up across the city, such as flooding, tree management, traffic, foreshore protection, parks and fields. As a group, we ourselves do not demonstrate efficiency. When some are absent, fail to prepare or not engaged, meetings go over to time and the same materials are rehashed. This inefficiency costs around two thousand three hundred dollars an hour in officer time. Is a lot of what we have to say really worth thirty-eight dollars of ratepayers' money per minute? We shy away from a collaborative approach, pushing matters into high-cost meetings rather than face-to-face meetings. There are many ways we can deliver more value for ratepayers. We can't just sit on the sidelines, accepting the budget repression.
Thank you councillor, you're at time.
That we have done as much as we can, but there is clearly the opportunity to do better.
Thank you councillor Rendles. Councillor Talty, Division Six.
Thank you mayor, thank you councillors. Pardon me. This process of budget development has been the most difficult that I've experienced in my tenure in council, and I must commend the CEO, the CFO, the ELT and staff on the long hours and extreme dedication they have put into getting this document to this meeting today. The community should be assured that council has a professional and highly qualified team in the organisation who are doing their best to achieve for the city while managing the extreme pressures on the budget, much of which comes out of matters outside of local government control and which are shared by councils across Queensland and Australia. I thank the organisation at every level for their efforts and their frank and fearless advice. Financial pressures have been mounting on all aspects of the economy since before, and certainly even more so after the experience of COVID. This has been added to by increasing extreme weather patterns that have resulted in costs like Cyclone Alfred, both the response and the ongoing recovery, and even just the ongoing wet summer and now winter, which increases growth and the need for simple but expensive things like more mowing and weed maintenance, road repairs from potholes and water undermining the strata of our roads which then need repair, and the many other unforeseen impacts that are sometimes not easily connected by residents who rightly are leaving these concerns to us while they navigate the challenges of their own finances and family concerns in the current world economy. The fact is, the buck stops with the mayor and the councillors, and we have the responsibility under the Act to make decisions and educate the community about those decisions and the reasons for them. And I am confident that all of those in this room understand that and take that responsibility very seriously. My biggest concern at present is the ongoing stability and ability of the council to meet the needs and expectations of the community in service provision and infrastructure. We do have an extremely educated community who have high expectations in both the provision of service and for the highest quality fiscal management of their funds in regard to that service provision. I will always strive to be able to hand on heart assure them that this is at the forefront of our concerns too. I am very pleased to say that ongoing long-planned infrastructure projects continue to be assessed and elevated towards completion across the city. In my particular neck of the woods, the joint project with the state to gain another boat ramp and access to the bay for boaters without the need to compete for parking and access with commuters and day trippers at our points, and will, sorry, will be funded and realised in this financial year. This is the culmination of ten years of work for me, from a time when it was not even on the radar, through the many necessary state and local reports and engineering and policy requirements, to finally providing a genuine improvement for the community in a significant infrastructure project. I thank the offices of council and state, both previous and current government, for sticking with it over the decade to finally bring this to fruition. I have been lobbied for some years by local residents to have a rural rating category that reflects the difference between the standard in urban residential abodes and rural zone properties, who generally feel they benefit less or differently by services provided by government in every aspect of delivery, from the standards applied to rural roads, lack of provision of sewer and town water, and increasing environmental expectation on them and their families that do not apply to residential urban dwellers. In this budget, this has been recognised with the inception of a separate category for rural residential properties. I am very pleased also and supportive of the efforts of council in supporting our disaster management, SES and RFS. I believe the community has experienced the great work of these teams through the preparation and response to Cyclone Alfred, with our crews and staff and the decisions taken in the face of and the wake of the cyclone now being recognised and cited as exemplary. And while there may be many ongoing learnings being developed and applied in preparation for the next time, we should all be very proud of what was achieved in the face of such challenge. I thank those councillors who attended many hours of workshops and continued to turn up to discussions, and who worked diligently and collegiately with the organisation to meet the challenges of building a budget, capital works plan and annual report in difficult financial circumstances. I look forward to continuing the work that is needed to continue to ensure the service delivery and programmes offered by council meet the needs and expectations of our community. I have concerns in the face of these challenges with the provision of this budget, over half a million dollars is uncontested and is a placeholder to meet the possible payments to contractors to do work that could be undertaken in-house. The mayor moved in March through the mayoral minute to bring back a term of reference for a review by outside contractors of council, but to date, no terms of reference.
Thank you councillor, you're at time.
Is that my one-minute warning, mayor?
You're at five minutes, as I've been providing to other councillors, so if you'd like to take some time now to finalise.
I will do. Thank you. But to date, no terms of reference have been provided back to councillors, and we have no idea the scope nor the possible cost implications of this in the face of such challenging times. While the uncosted contractors have been allocated half a million dollars, an amount roughly that equivents to half of one percent of the rate increase, this could be a good deal more. I cannot support uncosted, unmeasured and unexplained costs going into the budget. This council has traditionally struggled to attract commercial investment in the city, and this is understood to be related to many factors, including the fact that we are a very small local government area, surrounded by powerhouse councils of many times greater size, capacity, population growth, and with greater support for business in transport and development opportunity. As a result, we have always tried to trade on making Redlands the preferred place to do business and grow local jobs and economy through lifestyle for both owners and employees. I do not believe the measures in this budget acknowledge these concerns, nor address the ongoing loss of business to other areas that are more economically viable through transport opportunities.
Thank you councillor, you are well over time, if you could please wrap up.
I note that this is the first full budget process under our mayor, and I am concerned that she has declined to deliver a budget speech. This is my understanding.
Point of order.
Thank you councillor Boglari. Yes, councillor Talty, please.
Eight point one point eight, yet again.
Thank you councillor.
Councillor, have you, what is the ruling?
The eight point one point eight, a councillor must not make.
Councillor, I was asking the mayor for a ruling.
You are in reach of eight point one point eight. Please refrain from making personal reflections or impugn improper motives to another councillor or local government employee.
Could you explain how I've done that, mayor?
Through your previous comment, that is my.
What comment was that?
Through my, through your previous comment.
It was my point of order, and I found it was a criticism of another councillor, which comes under eight point one point eight.
Point of order, mayor. The councillor did not have the floor.
Thank you, councillor Boglari just explained her point of order, and it's upheld.
Thank you, mayor. Councillor Boglari has acknowledged her position in finance and on the Audit Risk Committee, however, as in the lead.
Thank you councillor Talty, as I've provided you instruction before.
I am trying to wrap up, mayor, if you'll allow me.
Yep, but you have gone well over time, please wrap up in the next five seconds, can you please? I've given everyone else an equal opportunity, so I think you'll let it.
Point of order, I've actually been timing it. Wendy, the first off, had seven minutes, ten seconds.
Thank you councillor Rendles, but I have a timekeeper up here with me, please wrap up councillor Talty.
I acknowledge the many comments of my fellow councillors and support many of the things that they have said. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie.
Thank you, mayor. I'd just first like to thank the CEO and the organisation for building into this budget every efficiency that they could find to mitigate a double-digit rate rise today. But today's budget reflects the growing challenges we face as a city with limited revenue raising capacity, ninety percent of our rate base is residential homeowners, and a community with expectations to deliver the same levels of service as our larger neighbouring councils, and an unwillingness by councillors led by the mayor to cut those services to reduce expenses. There are several key factors that also impact our budget. We often talk about the cost shifting to local governments in Queensland from the state and federal governments and private sector. This accounts to three hundred and sixty million dollars' worth of services every year that councils deliver that are not our core responsibility. This trend places increasing pressure on our operating budget, with mayors and councillors having to make the decision to either significantly raise rates or cut services. The financial assistance grants provided by the federal government has been decreasing in real value every year. The modelling has not changed since the nineteen seventies. While the federal government continues to throw around tax cuts at election time to increase their reelection prospects, they are forcing local governments to increase rates in order to provide for their communities. The federal government must increase untied funding to all councils to at least one percent of Commonwealth taxation revenue, indexed annually in order to provide financial relief to our communities. Depreciation expense reflects one of the significant costs of providing local government services and accounts for around twenty to twenty-five percent of the average local government operating budget. Every asset council owns, from donated artwork or historical artefacts, to playgrounds, footpaths and roads, must be depreciated. This also includes infrastructure that is delivered by other levels of government and should be owned by those other levels of government, but is transferred to council to depreciate. As an example of this is public transport infrastructure such as ferry terminals and park-and-ride facilities. What I'd really like to highlight to our community that the CEO also touched on is that of all the taxes Australians pay to the three levels of government, councils only collect three percent of it. Yet councils across this country deliver seventy-seven percent of Australia's road network to the value of two hundred and fifty billion dollars. Twenty-two thousand bridges worth thirty-one billion dollars, one hundred and two billion dollars in buildings that include admin buildings, libraries, community halls and art and cultural centres, thirty-two billion dollars in parks and recreation, a hundred and thirty billion dollars in stormwater systems, ninety-one billion dollars in clean drinking water and wastewater infrastructure, three point six billion dollars in airports and aerodromes, and twenty-five billion dollars in footpaths and cycleways. Let me just repeat that councils across Australia deliver all of that critical infrastructure for our communities while collecting only three percent of taxation revenue. Research has found that local governments are the most efficient level of government in delivering infrastructure and services for our communities, so it is imperative that the federal and state governments fund councils properly to the benefit of the people and to boost productivity. Having said all that, we do appreciate the significant funding the federal government has provided to deliver the long-awaited Kinross Road upgrade. This no-through road has over six thousand car movements a day, and this upgrade will deliver relief to road users' commute time out of Kinross Estate. We now need a significant funding injection to deliver stage two of the Wellington Street upgrade. I agree with councillor Boglari in that councillors need to take stock of our expenditure. Moving forward, councillors led by the mayor need to start considering what services councils should cut in order to mitigate high rate rises. We cannot remain financially sustainable while delivering high levels of service at rate rises that do not cover BAU and meet the sustainability targets set by the state government. And I'd just like to read an excerpt from the local government that applies to all councillors and mayors across Queensland. All councillors have the responsibility to ensure the local government discharges its responsibilities under this act. The mayor has the responsibility of leading, managing and providing strategic direction to the CEO in order to achieve the high-quality administration of the local government. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes.
Ta, thank you. Thank you, mayor. As always, I'm Division Eight centric, I suppose a lot of the comment has been from worldwide down to our city as such, but for me, Division Eight. And as always, my sincere thanks to Redland City Council's one team, led by our FAB CEO, Louise Rasan. Together, we are all striving to make a difference and making it count. Thank you. We're supporting our city to flourish into the future, we're very future-focused. With this, my tenth budget, as I've said year on year, it is a painful and stressful process for all involved, self-included. And I find that this year is the toughest of them all, and I think that's been echoed around the room already. My main concern, as previously articulated, is the process itself. Councillors workshop for months, and I'm sorry, I'm repeating what other councillors have said, but we all write our own speeches individually, and we're all feeling it, I think. We build the budget process in conjunction with our executive leadership team, and it is not till the end of the process that councillors see the capital budget, where we are informed of what is in, and again, for me this year, most distressingly, what is out. This year for Division Eight residents, what is in is the removal of Jasper Street Wellington Point Park. It's nearing thirty years, it's well-worn and will be removed and not replaced. It is a capital project, noting that the footpath will also be removed and the area reimagined as a parkland. Brewer Street Capalabar, the walkway bridge will be removed and a new bridge will be built. It'll be higher, wider and much safer. This will be a huge improvement for the many daily walkers and cyclists, plus my mobility scooter gents. I've got two gents that. I've got two gents that cross that bridge a couple of times every single day, and they will be happy indeed. One of the biggest projects council has ever undertaken, the duty halt remediation works. It's a two-year project with the enormous layering of environmental works as the capping of this legacy landfill site comes to fruition. And then the significant uplift of our Muddy's Rugby Club, it's our footy club, our rugby, comes to life with the addition of two new international playing fields and two smaller fields that will be putting Redlands on the international rugby map. Significant roadworks in Alexandra Hills for William, Rain and Crown Roads will certainly make a difference, especially to my Alexandra Hills men's shed, who will benefit from the associated drainage and gully pit upgrades to their forever muddy and slushy entry. So this is really going to be important to many at the men's shed. Councillors were able to make a difference with a combined voice calling for footpath connection upgrades, as was mentioned, and will help with identified missing links that will greatly help our community as they exercise, they walk their puppies, they push the prams and encourage toddlers on their trikes. And we see our community out early mornings and evenings. Doesn't matter where you are across our city, we are a city of walkers. For me, the fact that the much-needed and highly anticipated park upgrade for Rosella Street Wellington Point has not been included in this year's budget, and I truly believe this decision is simply not fair nor seemingly equitable for my residents. On door-knocking every home in the enclave of about 150 families, they overwhelmingly chose a bird-themed playground, and sadly, they are not, they are going to be deeply disappointed. This playground has been tracked and in progress for the past two years, is due for upgrade at about eighteen, nineteen years old and is shovel-ready. It should have been included in this year's CapEx programme, but it has not. And following numerous meetings with senior officers, thank you, and including a site visit, offering to give up projects in the division to make the financial room for this park upgrade.
Councillor Hughes, just letting you know you're at time too.
It has not worked, and my heartfelt apology to residents whom, as mentioned, I personally door-knocked that they simply miss out in a capital budget of $151 million this year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hughes. Councillor Colley for Division Nine.
Thank you, Chair. Adopting a budget is one of the most important responsibilities for council. It is also one of the most challenging tasks we as councillors are faced with. Finding the balance between raising revenue and managing expenditure isn't easy, particularly when the cost of living is impacting everyone in our community. Unfortunately, council isn't immune to the challenge rising costs present, with the cost of delivering the services our community relies on us for ever increasing. Our job isn't an easy one, but we all come into this position understanding we have to make hard decisions. Hard decisions have been made in the development of this budget, but we have been guided by a shared desire to continue delivering the best outcomes for our community. We've done that by continuing our commitment to invest in what makes Redlands an enviable place to live. This year, we are being more transparent than ever by including in the environment and coastal managed separate charge visibility to our residents of the full investment we make to maintain our environmental estate through conservation area maintenance, fauna management, waterway management, environmental education and coastal protection programmes. This is an honest budget. We've been upfront with our community about the investment required to deliver the services you expect of us. We know that all that really matters when you get your rates notice is what's on the bottom line. We haven't added a new charge like some other councils have done to mask the true value of your investment in our city, but have instead chosen to be transparent. We've said no to many additional operating requests seeking budget for the 2526 financial year, which means there is no increase to full-time employees across the business. We've built in significant budget efficiency of approximately $9 million, but that extra strain on our people, our greatest assets, isn't sustainable in the long term. There is also a $14 million increase in depreciation from the original 2425 budget. These are significant impacts on our community. We've made a commitment to continue supporting some of the less fortunate residents by maintaining a pensioner concessions. With our aging population, those concessions are worth in excess of $4 million annually. A comparison with other South East Queensland councils shows our rebate of up to $335 per annum, as mentioned by the CEO, is amongst the most generous available in our region. Discussion about the pension concession was one of the first items we discussed in this budget development process way back on October 29 last year, 237 days ago. And since that time, we've been through a robust process which brings us here today. I want to talk a little bit about that process. Over the past eight months, we've had numerous workshops with our highly capable finance and executive leadership teams to develop this budget. These haven't been presentations telling us what we should do, but sessions empowering us with the information we need to make informed decisions about what goes into the budget. These sessions have all been recorded and made available for councillors to watch if they weren't in attendance or to revisit the discussion at a later date. We have also had every opportunity to seek further information or clarity from council officers as required. The development of our annual budget is on us, the Redland city mayor and councillors. This isn't the CEO's budget. This isn't the organisation's budget. It is council's budget. We have all had the same opportunity to provide input. If any member of council is not happy with the process or where we have arrived over the past 12 months, I challenge you to engage more meaningfully in future.
Councillor Colley, you're at time.
Anything less than full and honest engagement and we are failing the community. I'm concerned that even in the past week, there have been changes proposed to this budget. I believe due to a lack of proper engagement throughout the process. We don't have to agree on everything and never will, but we owe it to the people who have put their trust in us to fully commit throughout the process, not just to being here today. Arriving here at our special budget meeting, we should all have a reasonable enough level of comfort to adopt the budget estimates and fixing of rates and charges for the 202526 financial year, which are before us, fulfilling the obligation we have to our community.
Thank you, councillor Colley. Councillor Bishop, Division Ten.
Thank you, mayor. And first, I too want to thank our CEO, the executive leadership team, our CFO and financial officers for all their work in preparing this budget, tireless work, especially considering the challenges and constraints related to this particular city. And while I do support adoption of the budget today because our city must continue to function, thanks to the excellent work by our officers, I do so with some serious reservations that I believe we must prioritise urgently for future review. You've heard councillors speak about it, we're a diverse bunch. Last year, I described our budget as transitional. New mayor, new council. I expressed concern that major projects were looming and suggested that we weren't preparing strategically or financially well enough. I believe that concern is now even greater. This budget still rests heavily on previously unexamined legacy assumptions about how we do this business. I feel we've missed key opportunities to reset, review and recalibrate as a new council. I'm concerned we're drifting out of alignment, both with financial reality and the expectations of our community. Although council has endorsed a merril minute to conduct a service review, which I support, we've not yet seen its scope or parameters. It's a step forward, but I remain concerned that without a parallel financial strategy review, which had been proposed, not supported, that we will not truly assess or understand the cumulative cost of past, current and proposed future projects or get the full picture of our ongoing operational and capital commitments. That revision to help us see with fresh eyes, in my view, was and is urgently needed. I recommend the Queensland Local Government Sustainability Framework, which outlines, it's now in lieu since Friday. It outlines three clear principles: foundations, doing the basics well, governance, finances and service delivery; infrastructure, delivering what the community needs, wants and can afford; and outlook, planning for the future. Right now and over an extended period, I believe we are leaning too far into outlook at the expense of the foundations and infrastructure that our residents expect and deserve. The expansion of expenditures in the arenas of our ambitious corporate plan, as well as economic development advocacy and tourism functions and some other embellishments, and while it's not been clearly costed in this budget, has continued to shift our priorities beyond what I consider to be basic core service delivery. Without clear cost attribution or forward planning visibility on a range of proposed operational capital projects going forward, these efforts risk making our council unsustainable unless we redirect our course. What we say we are going to do seems increasingly out of step with our actual capacity to budget, sequence and deliver. On planning, we're now revising our five-year-old corporate plan and our city plan, but rather than going back to the community to ask what matters most, which I've urged so that we can create a new community vision, we've only offered to the right for the community to comment on our current goals. That's not meaningful engagement. We need to build a new plan based on a renewed community vision that's not based on outdated assumptions of our own. It poses a governance and accountability risk, in my view, and while the process has now commenced, I remain concerned that we've bypassed a deeper conversation opportunity with our community that could have grounded the next plan in a shared understanding of our constraints, aspirations and priorities. When we begin with old thinking, we get risky planning. And for example, we've initiated master planning of the William Taylor Sports Precinct, which I welcome. But while I'm pleased that we are upgrading car parks, skate BMX and recreation areas with SEQ city deal funding, much needed and greatly appreciated, the priorities and needs raised by the various sporting clubs that we've consulted don't yet appear to have a funding path for guaranteed delivery of those essential requirements. At the Birkdale Community Precinct, I remain concerned that enabling works for the Whitewater Centre are proceeding while we still lack clear funding and sequencing plan for the broader, broader, community-supported vision for the master plan. And there's now a further risk that irreplaceable matters of environmental, cultural and heritage significance may be undermined by the proposed removal of state planning provisions. This places site-sensitive matters of great importance to our community under pressure and could lead to ongoing community concerns. This Cleveland revitalisation project, which councillor Mitchell refers to as being supercharged, has now commenced without a supporting strategy or a business case. Yet it will require significant funding and sequencing that's not yet been considered strategically.
Thank you, councillor. You're at, just letting you know you're at time too.
In light of these examples, I urge a greater degree of strategic clarity and sequencing to ensure our preparedness. There are many things that are happening in Division Ten that are listed, and I want to thank officers again for the second year. A few years ago, I asked for this annual Capital Works Programme. I endorsed that to councillors. I thank officers for the work delivering the outcomes. I also want to thank our city's amazing volunteers of sporting clubs and cultural organisations, environmental groups. Your work inspires many people and changes lives. In summary, I want to thank officers, express concern about landfill remediation sites and some other social infrastructure and community assets like halls and associated infrastructure going forward. It's a unique city, 335 kilometres of coastline. And while I do support this budget, I would like to place on record a strong call for a financial strategy review to help us guide our future, a transparent and meaningful service review that considers resident priorities and a community-focused revision of the corporate plan and city plan based on listening that's not assumptions. And as we prepare for next year, let's return to defining what matters most, doing the basics well, building on what we can afford while planning responsibly for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bishop. Right, I'd just like to thank everyone for their input to date and for all of your contributions in relation to the budget and its preparation. Fellow councillors, members of the executive team and the Redland community, I'm going to speak to you with a deep sense of responsibility to the people who elected me, and I ran for mayor with a clear and simple message in relation to rates, and that was valued for money. To recap on the basic budget information that we've received to date, council's blended CPI is currently 3.95%, as councillor Boglari outlined. Minimum general rate increase proposed is 7.89%. The total rate increase in rates and charges levied for the 202526 budget, compared with the rates and utility charges levied for 2425, is 10.68%. The budget forecasts a surplus of just over $700,000. The four separate charges council levies are: environment and coastal management, landfill remediation, Redland City State Emergency Services Administration and Redland City Rural Fire Brigade separate charges. It is important to acknowledge the factors that have impacted this year's proposed budget, as many councillors have outlined, and they are the higher depreciation costs than forecast increases in the Queensland Government Waste Levy, decreases in interest rates, increases to insurance premiums and the cost increases to building and construction materials. There is no doubt that these have all impacted the 2526 budget. The eight principles for leveraging rates and charges include accountability, transparency and representation. Council is to act in the interests of the whole community in making decisions about rates and charges. And on behalf of the Redland community, I take a restrained approach during a challenging financial time for all. Council is by all accounts in a strong financial position. I do note that borrowings are increasing, cash reserves are declining, and we have the ongoing management of council assets against a backdrop of increasing costs and costs shifting against multi-level government. This is a budget representative of not only the impacts to the organisation, but also in response to delivery. Delivery of business as usual, function, and delivery in response to the corporate plan developed in 2020 and all of the projects that have been accepted during that period and beyond. I understand why the councillors who have backed those projects have their own views in this budget, and I respect that. However, the lens that I look through must be for the whole city and all residents. We have a portion of this community struggling under the weight of the increased cost of living. The budget as represented proposes a substantial increase in rates and charges in order to deliver a surplus. I believe to deal with rising costs, we need to take bold steps. And this is why I raised a merril minute a few months ago to commission a comprehensive external review of council services and delivery models. The review is intended to make any possible improvements in our service delivery and to align services with community expectations. I hope it informs the development of next year's budget. While it raised great questions in a discussion, it was eventually passed. An emotion for a financial review proposed by councillor Boglari at the same time was not supported at that time. I believe we need to take a strong rationalisation in view of major projects. We need to pay attention to intent, we need to pay attention to real total cost, and we need to pay attention to genuine community benefit. With limited revenue, as we've outlined previously, we need to make sure every dollar counts. And when I say I want to make every dollar count, I mean it. Despite social commentary, I do not drive a council car. I have removed the proposed merril event from this year's budget, and I've self-funded legal defence and returned flights before Tropical Cyclone Alfred. I say this to illustrate that I take the use of ratepayer funds very seriously. Council has the existing assets that I outlined at the beginning of the meeting, and it needs to ensure they are maintained and functional. Different terms of council will have different focuses in terms of prioritisation. I believe it is imperative that council remembers that the more it acquires, the more it needs to maintain and depreciate. Decisions in our capital expenditure do have an impact on our operational expenditure. I shall be honest, while these numerous and large projects are in play, I'm extremely cautious about it. I shall be honest, while these numerous and large projects are in play, I'm extremely cautious about adding more to the list. However, I believe there are projects that are worthy of progressing due to the value they may present to the community. As earlier stated, I appreciate the tremendous amount of work undertaken by everyone in relation to this process. Every single member of the Redland City Council team. This budget is a difficult one to contemplate during a challenging period for council and our residents. Every councillor has given great deliberation and consideration in relation to their decision. It is important to recognise that all councillors do not need to agree and no councillor should be pressured to formulate or take a particular decision. I too thank those who have been present during workshops and those who have taken part in the meetings that I have called more recently. We have a majority of long-term councillors in the room and they have been present throughout previous terms up until this point. And I acknowledge their decisions and the impact that that now has in relation to the budget that we have before us. I thank everyone again for their contribution. I acknowledge the difficult position council has or currently in. And I encourage everyone to make a decision that they are comfortable with in relation to this budget. Thank you. As councillors have had the opportunity to speak to the budget and in the interest of time, I ask that you please consider the time you spend debating each motion. Once we resume standing orders in accordance with seven point five point six of council's meeting standing orders, I will be limiting debate no more than two minutes per councillor. With that said, can I have a mover and seconder that council meeting standing orders resume? Moved by councillor Bishop, seconded by councillor Colly, those in favour, Colly, sorry, those in favour. Thank you, that's carried unanimously. We move to agenda item number four point one, which is the Statement of Estimated Financial Position twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Hughes. Seconded councillor Boglari, I believe. Councillor Hughes, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you here, thank you mayor. Here in the report, it opens that this is to present council's statement of estimated financial position for twenty four, twenty five financial year for noting in accordance with section two oh five bracket one of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve. So this report here is for noting, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hughes. Any speakers against? Any questions? Councillor Colly, then councillor Mackenzie.
Thank you. Through you to the CFO, I did provide advance notice of this question. I had a question on page three of this estimated financial position. In the executive summary, it says the following are key items to note. The results of the asset revaluation and index undertaken, indexation undertaken in the twenty four, twenty five financial year are not yet, are not reflected in these statements. Last, last year's revaluations had a large impact on our current year's financial, financial sustainability. So I was just wondering if you could talk to us a little bit about that expected impact, please.
Thank you, and through you chair, thank you councillor Colly for the question. So what this does reflect is, as we've mentioned with the report, it's an estimated financial position with April year-to-date actual results, including all the actual results plus budgeted amounts for both May and June. So although we have estimated the impact of the revaluations and indexations that are taking place and what that may be, we, yet because they're not finalised, once they actually then go into the system, so to speak, then the actual results will be there. But absolutely, we have through that second budget review made sure we've estimated what the impact of any other increased depreciation costs out of those revaluations might be.
Councillor Mackenzie.
Thank you, mayor. And just on that same page with the executive summary, the note, the point above it, the estimated financial position operating results don't include accruals or deferrals and other adjustments. Can you just give us an indication on what the potential impact that could be on our operating deficit? Noting that our operating deficit that we're projected has increased by a further thirty-two percent? Thanks.
Through you, chair, thank you councillor Mackenzie. As I just mentioned before, we are estimating where we will be at the end of the financial year with that most second, most recent budget review happening in, in May. So it can be difficult to estimate that financial position, but we look at things like where we have to do all those end-of-year adjustments, where we need to maybe take up accruals, where there's been prepayments, any of the things that we have to adjust the accounts for under the accounting standards that we have to, to work through. And the, and the timing of any assistance, the financial assistance grant that we may receive as well, which is always unknown if we'll have it before this financial year.
Through you, mayor, just to follow up. So in your learned opinion, is that deficit likely to increase once we do those adjustments, noting that we're estimated at a four and a half million? Four, four point six million dollar deficit now?
Thank you, and through your chair, as I mentioned, it is quite difficult to fully estimate. We have used the most current budgeted data we have. In addition, so for May and June, we've got the current budget data, which was the latest forecast that we have at the end of the time, adding that on to the actual results we'd had for year-to-date April. So it is our most current estimated financial position, councillor Mackenzie, through you, chair. And it can be quite difficult to quantify if, if it will move, but as I said, that's our latest financial information forecast.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councillor Hughes, would you like to sum up?
No, thank you. Just again, I'll reiterate this as a report for noting.
Thank you councillor Hughes. I now put the motion, those in favour. Thank you, that's carried unanimously. Moving to agenda item number two, which is the national competition policy requirements for significant and other business activities for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Moved by councillor Mackenzie, seconded councillor Mitchell. Councillor Mackenzie, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'll just read out the recommendation that this is to note that the twenty twenty five, twenty six city water and city waste are expected to be significant business activities under, as defined under section forty-three four of the Local Government Act. And that we, to note that there are no other business activities of council that are expected to be significant business activities as defined under that section of the act. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any speakers against? Any questions? Councillor Talty.
Thank you, mayor. In the report, it notes the legislation and it, it does note that a local government can choose not to apply competition requirements in certain circumstances. So I would just like to ask what those circumstances might be that would allow the local government not to apply this competition policy? And whether, whether in difficult financial times, that might be justified to improve the position for our rate payers?
CFO Sandra Bridgman, would you like to respond?
Through your chair, councillor Talty, deputy mayor, I may need to take that one on notice because it's quite specific. And depending upon perhaps the nature of the business unit our council would be, be looking at. But absolutely, it's noted in the report here that business activity for combined water and sewerage services, which is our larger business unit, the threshold is ten thousand or more premises. If that question might be related to other business activities, I would have to take that on notice. Thank you.
CEO.
Thank you, and to, thank you, mayor, and to assist the CFO in the question. It's an excellent question that you do ask and appreciate that councillors are always looking at ways of and opportunities for financial improvement in the bottom line. You may recall for those councillors and members of the community who've been watching us for some time, that in previous years, we have had some parts of council's business that have been captured under the code of competitive conduct. And when the threshold is not met under the legislative requirements, then we have moved those businesses out of that consideration, which has enhanced our ability to be able to deliver services without necessarily meeting some of the complex reporting requirements. Some of those businesses from recollection were like our Indigenous Scares Cafe and perhaps Redland Performing Arts Centre. But that was done, you know, many moons ago. I think the areas of consideration in this report, particularly rate to city water and city waste, wouldn't be something that we would be able to look at removing from this consideration. But it is an excellent question and the CFO has mentioned that she'll take it on notice. And if there's any opportunities, we'll certainly come back to you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councillor Boglari.
Just because we're talking about it, Sandra, perhaps you could explain how that council sells the water, basically. So when there is wet weather, not as much revenue is raised. And then the, the money that the business makes, I think it's about seventy-five percent actually comes back to council. So it, it is a benefit, but it, it also depends on that weather is very on it. And as councillor Talty was getting at, is there a way that, you know, we could increase that? The only way I could think of would be to up water prices, I'm presuming. And I thought we got in, there was a lot to do with that a few years ago with the mar and everything else. So it, it, yeah, could you just explain actually how that works?
Thank you, and through your chair, thank you councillor Boglari. So with our water, wastewater business, there are those, at a high level two pricing components where we have a connection price that is revenue. But I believe what you're referring to is the purchase of bulk, the, the water consumption. So when there, we've had wet weather and we haven't had that water consumption by residents. And we do have that lesser component of overall revenue, but importantly, we also have a lesser component of expenditure associated with us purchasing that water to then be able to provide to the residents. Regarding water, wastewater businesses and these commercial businesses overall, they are quite heavily prescribed through various legislation. So we do absolutely need to follow any of those prescriptions, whether it's through the Local Government Act, the competitive, the competitive approach, I'll get it in a minute, the business unit approach that we need to take, plus also the water, the water code as well. Answer your question, thank you.
There's, there's a number of constraints around it, that's all.
Any other questions? Councillor Mackenzie, do you have anything to say in summing up? No, thank you. I now put the motion, those in favour. Thank you, that motion's carried unanimously. We now move to agenda item number four point three, which is the debt policy for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Colly. Councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, debt can be good and can be bad. Now, the debt policy is reviewed annually and it has been. At workshop of twenty ninth of May was when we last reviewed it and of course, in with a view of the long-term financial strategy to the community, this is where council must always decide why, when, how we will borrow and always borrow wisely. So it's just to ensure the sound management of our existing debt and any future debt. So I do invite you to have a look at the debt policy. It's very clear. And I'm, I'm very comfortable with it, how it's drafted. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. Any speakers against? Any questions? Councillor Colly.
Thank you, chair. Question to the CFO about our current, I guess, our, our current status with our debt. My understanding is that relative to our peer group in South East Queensland, we're in a strong position with lower outstanding debt and also lower debt per capita. Is that correct?
Thank you, and through you, chair, that's my understanding, councillor Colly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Bishop.
Thank you, and through the chair to CFO. In regard to future borrowings and our capacity or our, our intent to purchase or to procure new projects or undertake new works, should we and could we more clearly tie our debt policy to a, an intentional capacity to repay, such as having a business case attributed either to specific projects or to the pool in general, just to make sure we keep our eyes on that long-term responsibility of managing the debt?
Sorry, councillor Bishop, could you just outline your question for the CFO?
Just clarity on our, moving forward, there is a very likely requirement for us to increase our debt. Just to make sure that we earmark the components of new portions of debt to projects so that they have a business case and can be repaid, so that we're not going in debt that is unfunded and uncategorised and unrepayable. Can we more clear, can we more clearly identify how we do that?
Through you, thank you councillor Bishop. So we do, within our debt policy, we do say it is tied to either a class of assets or projects, but just checking the microphones on. But as always, we will always take feedback on for future budget processes.
Thank you. Any further questions? And noting that the policy states the new borrowings planned for twenty twenty five, six, twenty twenty six financial year and the next nine financial years. Thank you to everyone. I now, councillor Mitchell, would you like to sum up?
No, quite comfortable, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Now put the motion, those in favour. Thank you, that motion's carried unanimously. We now move to agenda item number four point four, which is the categorisation of land for differential rating twenty five to twenty six. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Mitchell, do I have a seconder? Councillor Mackenzie? Councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Simply to note this year that I believe there are those four new categories proposed in, in the rural area. Otherwise, it remains unchanged. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. Speakers against? Councillor Bishop.
Yes, thank you, mayor. One of the very strong principle, well, the principle that we use is this is a principle-based process that we generally apply to our budget deliberations. And the principle is generally that we have reasons and grounds for any changes. With regard to these new categories, one H and one I, two H and two I, which is proposing four new rural rating categories based on local sentiment. I understand that the call for it, but there doesn't seem to be any documented rationale. There's no financial modelling, there's no charge at this point, but there's been no community-wide consultation. And I fear that including this this year seems erroneous and potentially opens the door to future rate differentiation without a clear or fair foundation. And I would prefer that what we do is hold these items over. So I'd suggest that we remove these from this report and actually do it when we do our ratings category review, which I believe is happening within the next six months. That would be my preference. And if that's possible, I would like to move that. But if that's not something that the majority support, then I will vote against. Thank you.
Sorry, are you, are you proposing?
I would like to propose that we, with, with hold the inclusion of points one H and one I, two H and two I, noting the conversations that we've had and consider integrating that at a later point, which I do.
Point of order, mayor. Is this an amended motion? And if so, where is it?
Councillor Talty, thank you.
I'll retract and thus my reasons for voting against on principle.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Speaker four. All right. Any questions? Councillor Boglari.
I wholeheartedly agree with the principle-based approach and agree with councillor Bishop's comments. If this was to go down, there could be a motion to accept it without those categories included. My question is to the officers.
Point of order, mayor, is this a question?
Thank you. As, just as you spoke over me, I said that is my question. So, yep, there was a question.
Can you clarify councillor Bishop, what your question, sorry councillor Boglari, what your question is? I missed.
If this wasn't accepted, there could be a motion to have it without those categories included.
Mayor. Standing orders say that you cannot raise a second point. Councillor Bishop has proposed and then withdrawn a...
Could you provide me with the number, please councillor Tolty?
No, mayor. Sorry?
7.6.8.
Councillor Bishop didn't ask my question.
Councillor Bishop was going to propose an amendment and then withdrew it. Councillor Boglari is trying to raise the same amendment in some kind of backwards way. Thank you.
Sorry, can you please provide the number again? Councillor Tolty?
C. Repeating the same points already made.
I believe it was a separate question. Councillor Bishop was looking to raise an amendment.
I was seeking clarity.
You were, okay.
My question was to seek clarity because I also agree with the rating category coming, with the review, I mean, of the categories. Sorry, my ears are blocked today. With the categories being reviewed this year, I think this is preempting that.
Clarification. Thank you councillor Boglari. Okay, if you want to change, you have to raise an amendment. Otherwise, this motion is put and then it would be lost. It could be lost or carried.
Well, I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion that council resolves as set out here with the exclusion of 1H, 1A, 2H and 2I, which can be considered in the overall review.
Sorry, just to get clarity again, councillor Boglari, could you please just...
The four new categories.
Could you outline then?
1H, 1I, 2H and 2I.
Councillor Bishop, we need a second. Seconded by councillor Bishop. So now we have, we have an amendment now on the screen? Sorry, councillor Gole, what did you say?
I said this is a circus and this needs to be pulled into line. This could have been addressed long before this meeting, madam Chair. Long before. If there was an intent to change this as a motion, whilst every councillor's right to bring it to the floor at this time, you yourself have called numerous meetings to discuss items in the budget and this could have been raised and addressed then. We've, in the last two weeks, councillors, in the last two weeks.
Thank you councillor Gole.
And I have spoken to it even in a meeting with the CEO, so.
Thank you councillor, thank you councillors.
You've had an independent meeting.
Councillor Gole.
And not kept the rest of this in place.
Have not, I have not.
Councillor Gole.
Then why are you playing this game now?
The councillors are speaking over the Chair and being disrespectful to the Chair.
Thank you councillor Tolty. That is upheld. Please refrain and we will now work through this issue. We currently have a proposed amendment on the screen before us, which is to remove points 1H, 1I, 2H and 2I from the table within the recommendation. So we now have a live amendment. Councillor Boglari, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Only that a review of the actual rating categories is about to commence and I feel that this should be put in with that. I believe it's an external experienced consultant that will be doing it and I think everything should be as it is and changes made on whatever they come back and recommend and discuss with us.
Thank you councillor Boglari. Speaker against? Any questions? All right, and now put, sorry. Councillor Boglari, do you have anything further to add to sum up? All right councillors, I now put the motion, those in favour, the amendment. Councillors Boglari, councillors Hewlett, councillor Bishop and myself. Councillors against? Councillors Mitchell, Gole, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes and Colley, the amendment is lost. We return to the motion, the original motion. Councillor Mitchell, would you like to sum up?
Just very briefly, I mean, mayor, certainly acknowledge the four new categories again, acknowledge the debate around them. These were discussed at length amongst the majority of us during the workshops and out of respect for all those conversations. We had agreed to bring them forward today, acknowledging that they would be reviewed into the future. So I think we will just honour that discussion within the workshops and thank you for the discussions.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. I now put the motion, those in favour. Councillors Mitchell, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes and Colley. Those against? Councillor Boglari, Gole, Hewlett, Bishop and myself. Motion is carried. We now move to agenda item number 4.5, Environment and Coastal Management Separate Charge, 2025, 2026. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Tolty, seconded by councillor Colley. Councillor Tolty, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, mayor. I've had a number of meetings in my capacity as the representative for environment and parks and the officers have worked diligently to do their best to be open and transparent, provide information back. And this Environment and Coastal Separate Charge represents value for our residents who spend a great deal of their recreational time in our parks and reserves and on our waterfronts and works out to be a contribution per household per year of just under $5 in total. So that is a good value for money when you look at the many, many thousands of square metres of environment area that we have to manage. And as has been noted in this meeting already today, the ongoing concerns over cost shifting with regard to environment in coastal management and remediation, which is now included in this levy. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tolty. Speakers against? Any questions? Comment councillor Boglari?
Thank you, through you to Graham. We spoke recently at the general meeting about biosecurity and all the work you do there. And this environmental levy certainly does so much across the city. I think it's like the biosecurity, that our residents actually have no idea of the amount of work. And councillor Tolty just said it's approximately, you know, like $5. But the actual benefit that we get through our mental health and also with tourism, everything due to the work you do, it's millions. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Boglari. Any other comments or questions? Right, I acknowledge on page 39 of the agenda that it is outlined that the areas that this separate charge covers and the services are conservation area maintenance, bushfire mitigation, the tracks and trails inclusion, the maintenance, corridor management, fauna management, waterway management, environmental education, conservation, support, coastal protection. So it is a very broad spectrum of services covered by this special charge. And now councillor Tolty, would you like to sum up?
No, thank you, mayor.
All right, I now put the motion, those in favour. Those in favour are councillor Boglari, Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Colley, Bishop and myself. Those against? Councillor Gole and councillor Hughes. The motion is carried. We move to agenda item number six, which is landfill remediation separate charge, 2025, 2026. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Bishop, second. Councillor Boglari. Councillor Bishop, would you like to speak to this motion?
Thank you, mayor. The purpose of this is to submit to council for adoption the landfill remediation separate charge for 2025, 26 financial year. Just noting that this will allow the 77.60 cents per annum charged on a per lot basis will fund the operational projects relating to monitoring and remediation of closed landfills, including activities in the list that are on the page 42. There are many sites across Redland City which do need to be considered and managed, that's the list there, into the future. And from what I understand, the works at Judy Holt, which are currently taking council's major focus, are also going to be taking most of the funds, if not all of that, which was put aside for that particular purpose. So that will be a complete drawdown of a reserve and there are many other sites across the city that do need to be managed. This is one of the areas where I believe we need to be paying close attention for both safety and environmental hazard and associated risk in compliance with other levels of government's expectations and our own due diligence and good governance. So I do acknowledge this charge is recently integrated into our fees and charges, but I think we need to be very clear councillors going forward in our service review and management of this particular legacy from previous generations, that we do need to manage this and there's costs associated with it. So just bringing that to highlight to everyone's attention and thank you.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Speakers against? Any questions? Sorry, speaker against? Question?
Thanks, madam Chair. Through you to my colleagues that have spoken. How can you in good conscience say that you can't support a budget, but you're actually going to support charges being applied?
Point of order, mayor, that's not within the standing orders.
Thank you councillor Tolty, it's upheld.
Okay.
Any other questions? On the basis that I don't, it's not a direct relevance to the recommendation currently before us? Any other questions?
Just for interest, is there an officer in the room that can actually talk about the challenges that we face as a council with this number of sites at all? Just so people understand the implications on our budget with this.
Thank you councillor Boglari. If there's not, that's...
The man, the man of the moment, group manager Brad Salton. Because I know that we're unique in this section as well.
Good morning. Thanks councillor, through you, madam Chair. The closed landfills across our city, we have 28 closed legacy landfills across our city. The real focus is on the higher risk sites. There is a number of higher risk sites. And as we've heard, we've heard this morning, Judy Holt is underway, Judy Holt Park is underway and that's a real focus for us at this point in time. At those other high-risk sites, there's a number of those across our city, we are doing extra monitoring and increasing our infrastructure from a monitoring perspective on a number of other sites, such as John Fredericks Park, Charlie Buckler, Duncan Road and the likes. We are looking at minor works on these sites to ensure that we're working with our regulators and making sure that we're keeping those sites as safe as possible. And as usual, we continue to focus on these legacy sites and these risks and we will continue to progressively review these sites annually in preparation of future budgets.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Gole.
Thank you. Do these charges form part of our budget moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gole.
Do these form part of the budget moving forward? Yes or no?
So councillor Gole, as we've all been informed throughout this process, there are four separate charges and this is one of them.
And do they form part of the budget?
It's a, it's a...
It's a yes or no? Answer.
CEO, would you like to provide an answer in relation to councillor Gole's question?
Yes.
Thank you. So I refer to my other question, which is, how can you sit there and say you're not going to support a budget and then put your hand up with these charges?
Thank you councillor Bishop, the point of order.
I refer to the previous point of order.
Yes, thank you councillor Bishop. And again, that's upheld for the same reasons.
Okay. I thought we're operating on transparency. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I now put the motion. Oh, sorry, summing up, councillor Bishop.
Yeah, just briefly, I just want to thank exemplary officers and the importance of this particular work and the charge and the seriousness with which we all take on board the information, frank and fearless advice back from officers. It's not just the basics, this is the essentials and it's dealing with legacy issues. It's a challenge and it's a shared burden and so thank you to residents for understanding. We will do everything we can to make sure we have this on track going forward. Thanks to our officers.
Thank you councillor Bishop. I now put the motion, those in favour. Councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself. Those against? Councillor Gole, the motion is carried. We now move to agenda item number 4.7, which is Redland City Council Emergency Service and Administration Separate Charge, 25, 26. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? So councillor Boglari, seconded by councillor Tolty. Councillor Boglari, would you like to speak to the motion?
I noticed that Mike Tate is here, perhaps he would like to say, I thought maybe you'd come into the room to actually talk to it. Sorry, Mike. I thought you could tell us how fantastic our SES are and the amount of work they do, not only in Redlands but across the state.
So, count, so, isn't it the SES? So this, this motion relates to the separate charge and perhaps if you could, Mike, give an outline of what it was previously, what it now, what it now is and what it's covering.
And what it covers.
Thank you.
Through you, madam Chair, thank you. So the SES separate charge covers the, the operational elements of the SES as well as, excuse me, as well as any capital purchases. So the idea of the programme is the, the charge that's raised is to recover the programme, so the cost of actually running the SES. And that's a cost to council, as you well know. Council also owns all the SES, SES assets, facilities, fleet and equipment. And therefore there's also a depreciation expense that goes along with that. So that's what the charge covers. And what's being proposed is to simply recover the cost of running the SES for a year.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, councillor Boglari, do you have anything to sum up? Say to sum up. All right, I now put the motion, those in favour. It's councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself. Those against? Councillor Gole, the motion is carried. We now move to agenda item number 4.8, which is the Redland City Rural Fire Brigade Special Charge, 2025, 2026. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? It's councillor Tolty, second. Councillor Rendles. Councillor Tolty, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, mayor. Similar to the previous matter, this is the separate charge to cover grants and capital infrastructure, operational, well, sorry, not operational matters, operational matters are covered by the state, for rural fire. And I'm sure that everyone in our recent cyclone experience will have seen all of the uniforms out there. seen all of the uniforms out there immediately in the aftermath of the cyclone, helping people to clean up using chainsaws and working hard for our community, helping to shore up blown rough roofs and rescue people. That, those jobs fall to both our SES, our RFS and under the leadership of our disaster management and our police. The six dollar per year charge represents eleven cents per week per household across the city and also represents great value for money for the community. Between that and the fourteen cents per week that's contributed by each household to the SES, for twenty-five cents a week, we have the surety of being able to call on those wonderful volunteers and all their training and equipment that they dedicate all year. So I recommend that to councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Speakers against councillor Hewlett?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to speak against it at the moment because I have concerns about the legitimacy of this levy being charged across the city. We're collecting levy that.
Point of order, Mayor.
How is that a point of order?
Councillor Talty?
Under the Local Government Act, council cannot bring forward a motion which is.
I'm not bringing forward a motion.
Excuse me?
I'm not bringing forward a motion, I'm speaking against it.
I didn't suggest you were bringing forward a motion councillor. You're speaking against a motion which has been brought forward under the Local Government Act and has been legally checked through the budget and through the relevant agencies. There is no legal issue with this levy and that has been.
Councillor, thank you, thank you councillors. Thank you councillors.
If I can finish my point of order, Mayor, that has been explained through the process and leading up to the budget. And the question and the matter has been asked and answered through the budget process.
Councillor Talty, could you point me through to the standing order that you're relating to?
Asked and answered in the budget process, Mayor. That is the standing order.
I believe that councillor Hewlett, I don't uphold the standing, the point of order because I believe councillor Hewlett is speaking against the motion as is allowed.
Councillor made a statement that this was not a legitimate charge under law.
I believe he stated he had concerns. I believe he was speaking against. I don't believe he made a statement of fact. Could you clarify please councillor Hewlett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think it was made perfectly clear to me that it was a legitimate charge being carried across the whole city. I fully support the charge. All I'm concerned about is can this levy be charged across the whole city for a specific group of people who are on Simby and Mount Cotton? That's all I'm inquiring about. I'm happy to support it otherwise, but I just want confirmation that this is a legally acceptable outcome and has been checked and is a legal levy.
Right, thank you councillor Hewlett. As we are in speakers for and against, but I'll allow a question at this time, given, thank you, allow a question in this time to address that comment. Perhaps council's general counsel can respond to the question that's been raised.
Thank you Chair, thank you councillor. Yes, that particular question was answered by independent lawyers during the budget process. They also reviewed this report as well, including its recommendation.
So I take that council's general counsel, that in answer to the question, the actual answer to the question is, yes, council is within its legal parameters to apply this levy citywide. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've had advice to the contrary from another council, but I'll let it go.
Thank you councillor Hewlett. Resume to speakers for councillor Rendles, you just interjected before, but you are a speaker for. Would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That, in relation to the rural fire services, as was pointed out, that they provide a vital safety net, not just for the islands, not just for Redlands, but for the state. Rural fire services operate across local government boundaries and we saw the ones coming in here during the cyclone. In areas such as the islands, where there is not a Queensland Fire Service present, these are the people who come for small matters, like fuel spills. But they're also first responders for very traumatic and life-threatening events. Car accidents, house fires, such as the one in August two thousand and twenty-three, where a father and five children died. Bushfires, moving over to the mainland and to the other islands and other areas of the state when there's a fire. I'd also note in commentary on the issue raised by councillor Hewlett, which is of a valid perception, that though the service may be based in a local area, the membership of that service is not necessarily based in that area. People can come from all over the city to volunteer with fire services in a particular location. And indeed, they can come from outside of the city. And we see this with all our volunteer services, whether it's the RFS, the SES or marine rescue. One of the most important things about this is it shifts the cost more equitably across the city for a service that is really providing a citywide service and importantly, representing our city in times of crisis and fire across the state. What it is doing, and this is one of the few changes, that actually reduces some of the costs to the residents of Simby who previously were carrying the full cost of this valuable citywide service, some of the least socio-economic advantaged groups in the community, to a fair allocation across the city. I commend this motion to you.
Excuse me, everyone, for coughing, I've been a bit under the weather since last Wednesday. All right, so speakers for councillor Rendles, anyone else speaking against? Any other questions in relation to this levy? Could I ask the relevant officer, would that be Mike again, just to outline, to come forward, so Mike Tate, come forward, just to outline this, the changes to this levy for the record. So what it was last year and how it was applied and to which residences and how it's changed this year, now that we've heard the increased scope and the impact that this has for our whole community?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So looking at the history, the levy, the rural fire service levy has only ever been charged on the southern Moreton Bay Islands, even though we also have a rural fire service on North Strabrooke Island and on the mainland. So on the Bay Islands, last year it was at fifteen dollars sixty-four. And to recover that program this year, we'll be looking at roughly twenty dollars and twenty-eight cents, which will be charged per ratable property across the southern Moreton Bay Islands. What we've looked at this year is to extend that to all ratable properties in the city. And that actually brings the charge down to six dollars per ratable property. Well, that also recognizes that we do have rural fire services on the, on Strabrooke and on the mainland. And they do service all properties in the city. And we've seen that in recent events, as has been alluded to by the councillors, where they've been providing tree removal services, door knocking services. The rural fire service goes beyond just putting out bushfires. So it is a service that is relevant to all properties within the city. And that's the backbone of this proposal.
Thank you very much. Councillor Talty, would you like to sum up?
I need to say that I commend this to the councillors and I thank you for your support for all of our emergency services and disaster management.
All right, thank you, everyone. I now put the motion, those in favour. That's councillors Boglari, Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Talty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself. Those against councillor Gole and the motion is carried. All right, that brings us to motion four point nine, adoption of budget estimates and fixing of rates and charges 2025 to 2026. Councillors, I draw your attention to an amendment on page eighty-nine. I understand this has been distributed to all councillors and it doesn't affect any of the, any other part of the document. Thank you. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? We're just gonna, we'll just bring that up on the screen? We have hard copies at the front of councils, would like to have that in hard copy to consider? So the amendment is up on the screen now. Thank you. Just while I continue to cough, apologies to everyone. CFO, if you could just go through that change for us?
Thank you. And through you Chair, we had an amendment, we needed to correct one line in the table. So the operating surplus ratio, we'd had the first figure for twenty-five, twenty-six accidentally transposed across the table. And this amendment is just updating the remaining, the remainder of the financial years with the correct percentages. As mentioned before, it doesn't affect any of the financial results or have any other implications on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you CFO. All right, do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Bishop, a seconda. Do I have a seconda for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Hewlett. All right, councillor Bishop, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. As prescribed under the act, council does need to adopt a budget. This is the substantive culmination of a majority of that work. It goes through a suite of quite extensively outlined points in the officer's recommendation. This is the, effectively the matter that is most substantive in our budget adoption, in order for us to deliver the requirements for the city that councillors have participated in over the past eight months as a cohort. And officers have brought to us a range of suggestions based on feedback from councillors. While each of us may have concerns about future matters relating to issues coming forward or past, this is a budget we have discussed and has by all reports. And thank you very much to our CFO, to the finance team, to the CEO and to executive leadership who have responded to council's requests. I raise, I move this and commend to councillors, the consideration that we vote based on our participation, our conscience and the principle of support for the work that is what local government does. Any other motives that are encouraging people to vote in a particular way, look to yourselves. And I encourage that we continue to allow the city to do what it needs and that we bend our minds to making efforts so that the next year's budget addresses challenges that are maybe holding you back from concerns. We do need to work together. It may not be the perfect working environment, but it requires all of us to do our level best and work on principle. With that principle, I would like to move this motion.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Speakers against? Any questions or comments? Councillor Hewlett?
Thank you, Mayor. As councillor Bishop alluded to, we've all been through this budget process, we've all contributed to some level or not. There's lots of things I haven't really completely agreed with, but I have to say the officers have worked their hardest to provide levers for us to decrease the increase in general rates, but they weren't accepted. One of those was, for example, for having twelve visits to the transfer station here instead of free for all. Now, that would have saved, I can't remember the exact amount, but in the millions, I imagine. Yet we didn't accept that. So if we're not going to accept these levers that help offset the rates, then we've got to accept that we need to increase the rates because the level of service in this city that is expected by the community is second to none. As you know, how many customer requests do we put through every day over stuff that they want officers to do? I think last year it was over fifty thousand a year, it's probably more this year, of customer requests that other government offices, the community expect council to deliver. And that's a massive operational demand. And we get them every day. Like, that's why we've got support officers in there working all day, every day, trying to support us with all these requests that come through. So I'm afraid if we don't support this budget, we're not going to meet that level of service. The officers have done all they can to provide us with all the information. I take on board particularly councillor Hughes's comment about the capital expenditure program. I've been unhappy with it for many years, but it's not going to stop me supporting the budget. I know exactly what you mean about the process and how you can be let down and you think you're getting something into the budget this year and then it falls below the line. And it's a horrible situation, but I fully understand that situation. But this budget runs the machinations of council. We need this budget put through so we can continue to operate as a council and run business as usual. So that's why I'm supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hewlett. Any questions? Councillor Mackenzie?
Can I just have a point of clarification from officers that although we had discussed visitations to the waste and transfer stations, it wasn't actually an option that we were able to implement for this budget? Is that correct? Oh, it wasn't?
General Manager Organizational Services, Amanda Pofumi?
Yeah, thank you Chair. It was a matter that Chris Isles, our acting general manager, brought. And I acknowledge Chris isn't with us today. So my memory of the conversation was that it would have been in for part of the year, I think for six months of this year, if I remember rightly. So it wouldn't have been something that they could have done straight away because we would have had to have, you know, put in place some, some things to enact that change. But my memory was it would have been six months of the benefit would have been in this financial year. But I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what that was worth. But it was something that was workshopped and discussed with councillors as an option and wasn't supported, is my recollection.
Councillor Bishop?
Mine is a question to councillors and it's first of all acknowledgement of the meetings that you, as the mayor, have called for us to have discussions together. My question to councillors is, has there been any discussion or consideration among some of you that I may not have been invited to, to discuss or consider an alternative if this does not get voted today? If this does not get up today, has there been any discussion among councillors about an alternative or any plans for what to do in that instance? Because the meetings that we've had together, to which I have been invited, have proposed this as the budget. And with this vote in front of us, I'm asking if there's been any other discussions about a contingency plan to which I might not have been invited because I'm just sensing the room and I wanted to make sure that we've got either support or a Plan B for anyone who might have thought about what to do in a situation if their hands don't go up. We've had opportunities provided by the mayor. Has anyone had other discussions or other meetings to which I may not have been invited?
Councillor Gole?
Thank you, Mayor. No, there hasn't been other meetings that are alluding to what you're suggesting, that there's some type of sidebar conversation. In fact, I think it was last week, Mayor, I went to the mayor's office and asked the mayor if we could consider having another meeting. The mayor facilitated that meeting so we could actually discuss based on the moving feast of what is a budget and how other councils are managing their expectations of a budget. And the mayor very kindly facilitated a meeting that we all had the opportunity to attend to discuss some type of a moving forward. But to suggest that there's been something and preempt a hands up and who's going to vote for it.
Thank you councillors, I think it was a question that's been answered from your perspective councillor Gole, thank you. Councillor Boglari?
Oh, just two points. I did mention in that meeting, I would be happier with a five, you know, a four or five million dollar deficit to take it off the rate payers, but that at the time wasn't, you know, agreed to by the majority. So that was that. I would like to ask though, as there seems to be a limited number of. I would like to ask though, as there seems to be a limited number of fours and against speaking, can I ask if this budget at the time we are right now isn't going to move forward, no one's going to put their hand up one way or the other, can I ask through you to the CEO or governance, what procedure? Are we able to adjourn? Do we have it lie on the table to a following date? I'm just trying to find out what the procedure is if it doesn't go forward now.
Point of order, Mayor.
CEO.
Thank you Mayor, thank you Councillor Boglari for the question.
Point of order please Mayor.
Councillor Mackenzie.
8.2.1, councillors should not ask questions, the answers for which have already been provided to the councillor. These questions have already been asked and answered in the multiple meetings that we've had with officers, the additional meetings that, Mayor, you have facilitated afterwards with the CEO and councillors to understand the implications of what does not happen if this budget doesn't pass today.
I think, given at this point in time, we've got alternatives as I understand for further down the track. But I think Councillor Boglari's question related to where we currently are in this process. Councillor, sorry, CEO, are you able to provide comment?
Thank you Mayor, and thank you councillors, I would not preempt what your vote will be. I think you need to put the motion before council and then any action or other actions needs to be considered post your decision.
Thank you CEO. Does that answer your question, Councillor Boglari?
Well, I understand if we get to a vote and it goes down, but I'm not even seeing us getting to a vote. I guess that was my question.
Well, I think we will get to a vote because we will put, we will get to, thank you, thank you councillors. We will get to a vote, well, when we put the vote, and then people will be able to indicate their decision. Councillor Gollay. You now had questions.
Thank you Chair. Through you to the CFO. The four or five million dollar or two million dollar deficit that has been suggested a few times now, what impact would that actually have to our current deficit and what would it actually do?
Point of order, Mayor.
Councillor Talty.
Is the councillor speaking to the item before us, the budget we have in front of us? Is there a deficit there you're referring to?
Sorry Deputy Mayor.
Thank you Councillor Talty, that upheld, we are on this particular recommendation before us, Councillor Gollay.
Well, I just hold great concern if we were to put something out there, Madam Chair, to say, oh, we could have saved the day with a four or five million dollar deficit, what would that impact be to the future residents paying rates? And I think it's, you know, everyone's trying to throw something across the room, but at the end of the day, that's not a solution.
Thank you for your comment, Councillor Gollay. Any other questions? No? All right. So now, Councillor Bishop, would you like to sum up?
No, I think the moment awaits.
All right. Councillors now now put the motion for those in favour. Councillors Hewlett, Councillors Bishop, Councillor Mitchell. So those councillors in favour.
Mayor, if we could have an indication of how you intend to vote on the budget?
No, I'm calling, as Chair, I'm calling for the vote and as per previous resolutions and as per the previous 14 months of council, councillors have been able to determine their own decisions without first hearing from me. So I now ask all councillors, those in favour. Councillors Mitchell, Councillors Hewlett, Councillors Bishop. All right. Councillors Boglari, Mitchell, Hewlett and Bishop. Those against. Councillors Gollay, Councillor Rendles, Councillor Talty, Councillor Hughes, and we have some abstaining I take, sorry. So just to clarify, those councillors in favour of the budget, Councillors Boglari, Mitchell, Hewlett and Bishop. Those against are councillors.
Motion to suspend the meeting, Mayor.
All right, so you're moving a procedural, a motion to suspend standing orders?
No, not to suspend standing orders.
To adjourn the meeting?
To adjourn the meeting.
All right, those, for how long, Councillor Talty?
I will allow the Chair to determine that.
No, you're moving for the adjournment, Councillor Talty, so please stipulate the amount of time.
Mayor, because you have refused to communicate with or extend consideration to the councillors.
Councillor Talty, point of vote.
Point of order.
Councillor Bishop.
The point of order is in relation to making assertions against another councillor.
Yeah.
This is not an opportunity to leverage, I'll vote this way if such votes that way. That is not what this is about, you're being asked to vote on the budget.
Thank you Councillor Bishop.
There is a point of order before you.
Yes, thank you Councillor Talty, I'm aware and it's being upheld, and I give you a warning. This is the second time we've raised this point of order in relation to yourself during this meeting.
Excuse me? The second time you raised what?
Councillor Talty, please don't sit here and argue.
You've just given me a warning, Mayor, I'm asking what the warning is for.
The warning is in relation.
So that I can ensure I do not repeat the behaviour.
The warning is in relation to 8.1.8, where a councillor must not make personal reflection or impute improper motives to another councillor or local government employee.
Could you please explain when I did that?
You have just done it now.
And I called a point of order on it.
And Councillor Bishop, and the point of order is upheld. Thank you Councillor Talty.
I would like to raise a motion of dissent in the Chair based on that decision, thank you.
That escalated quickly, we got the ruling.
So I understand that the dissent is against my ruling for the, so this is a new one. Give me a few minutes to confer and get some advice.
Do we have to address the adjournment motion first or?
All right, so while I am awaiting further advice in relation to this, I'm advised that lunch is outside, so I move that we take an adjournment to get advice on the Councillor Talty's raising.
Point of order, Mayor, I'm not sure that you can move to an adjournment when there is a matter before you.
Well, I've been advised, I've been advised that I can, so I'm going under advisement unless anyone in the room can provide an alternative. Just give me a minute please while I gain advice, thank you. All right, so this is a, this is a, this is a new one apparently for all of us at the moment. So now I put the dissent apparently to the vote.
It actually is a new one, Councillor Beridge tried to do it last term with the previous mayor.
Oh, okay, so it occurred last term, and now Councillor Talty is raising it this term.
Mayor, I'd like to raise a further matter, and that is that.
We've got, point of order, point of order, because I seek clarity on the meeting. We have a vote on an item, then we have a motion for a suspension, now we've got a motion of dissent, and now is another motion, I mean, how many racks and stacks?
This is not another motion councillor, excuse me.
Thank you everyone, if I can put, we'll go back to the first issue of dissent, and I'll put that as I understand it, as I'm taking this under advisement.
I'd like to speak to the matter of dissent, please Mayor.
We're seeking advice because it's a procedural motion, I'm told that there's no provision for speaking to it.
I would suggest that your tone and what you have just said to me is exactly what you are objecting to in my statements.
I now, under advisement. So I'm now putting the procedural motion that there is a dissent in my ruling with respect to a procedural, or respect to standing orders. Respect, with respect to Councillor Bishop's point of order. Councillor Talty's dissent has to be dealt with first, isn't this fun? Councillor Mitchell.
Just a question, in order to make a decision on the dissent in the Chair, had this been moved fast, could I have some clarity from the Chair on what was the, what was the concern and the judgment from the decision of the Chair in order to be able to make a decision on whether there's any dissent?
We can't, we've moved past that, so now we are, so the procedural motion is that Councillor Talty has raised a point of dissent. So we have to vote on that, I understand, so we're voting now on.
Mayor, this is a vote in dissent in your ruling, and therefore your ruling needs to be explained so that the councillors know what they're voting on.
That was my question with respect, Mayor.
So.
Under 7.6.2, a procedural motion that the question be put, sorry, a procedural motion must be, may be moved, and where such a procedural motion is carried, the chairperson must immediately put the question. So we've got to deal with it straight away. So with regard to, a councillor may move a motion of dissent in relation to the ruling of the chairperson on a point of order, or that matter, or any other matter, except a decision that is made by the chairperson in relation to a conduct breach. The mover of the motion may speak to it, my apologies, the mover of the motion may speak to it, and the chairperson may respond prior to taking the vote. If the vote overturns the chairperson's decision, the meeting will proceed as the chairperson's decision has not been made. So Councillor Talty has the ability to talk on it.
All right, Councillor Talty, would you like to speak to your?
Yes, thank you Mayor, you made a ruling which you would not make clear. You have said that it was a second warning on a conduct breach, and I am entitled to know exactly what that ruling was against standing orders as you upheld it because I have the right not to make that mistake again. So I have asked you both before you made the ruling, and now again after you made the ruling, exactly what the ruling was, and whether that can be upheld or not will be up to the councillors.
So I provided a warning in relation to your conduct because of the comments that you made just prior to the breach of standing orders being raised by Councillor Bishop.
And can you clarify what that was, Mayor? You still have not said what the breach was.
So in response to your comments made about me personally, which related to.
That was not related to this matter, Mayor, that was related to the earlier matter which I accepted.
No, I stand by the fact that she made similar comments just before Councillor Bishop raised.
I attempted to ask you a question, Mayor.
No, I stand by my comments, Councillor Talty. So if we need to, I think, I believe, I understand we still need to deal with this matter.
No.
So, thank you Councillor Rendles, I believe we still need to deal with this.
Is it in relation to?
Councillor Rendles.
The time of suspension, or is it relation to some other thing? Because two things transpired there very closely, and I'm a little bit confused which.
Councillor Rendles, as I have said, we need to deal with, as I understand, this matter first. So, Councillor Talty, you've spoken to the issue, so now I understand, not having been through this process before, that we need to take a vote in relation to the dissent. So are we trying to achieve clarity in relation to, okay, Councillor Bishop, given that it was your point that was raised initially?
Thank you. I believe that I have a partial responsibility. I raised 8.1.8, which refers to a councillor must not make a personal reflections or impute improper motives to another councillor or local government employee. And that was in relation to Councillor Talty's suggestion that without seeing your vote, and which applied pressure to you, which was imputing inappropriately, that was my concern.
8.1.8, a councillor must make personal reflections or impute proper motives to another councillor or a local government employee.
And that was my point of order.
And that's my point of order to you right now councillor.
Did you call one?
Is that you have made, imputed proper motives.
Yep. I understand that you were, goodness, I understand that you were trying to explain.
Simply trying to get, I was trying to get us on to the vote which was the process.
So perhaps, perhaps, sorry, I've lost track at the moment, and I believe, I'm trying to seek some clarification here through a process that I've not travelled through before. So we still have the dissent to deal with. Councillor Bishop, you were trying to outline why you raised your point.
I was seeking to clarify.
Point of order, Mayor, I believe under the standing orders that as it is a point of order where you made a ruling against me, and as was just read out by the officer, that only comments from yourself and me as the raiser are relevant, and that Councillor Bishop does not understanding orders have a right to speak to it, and it should be put to the vote.
All right, so we will now quite simply put that to the vote. Those in favour of Councillor Talty's raising a, is it called a motion? Of dissent in the ruling of the Chair in relation to Councillor Bishop raising 8.1.8.
You've got it backwards.
Councillor Talty?
It should be those who support the ruling as made, not those who support the dissention.
Thank you. Those who support Councillor Talty's, my ruling against the, oh, it's highly amusing. Thank you Councillor Mackenzie. I'll put the, I'll put the, put the motion, those in favour. Well, perhaps you could outline it again for me, Councillor Talty, given that you've been through this before.
Who's the Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Talty, I'm receiving advice that that's not correct, so we will receive advice from governance. So I now put the procedural motion to the vote if you agree with Councillor Talty's motion of dissent in my ruling on the point of order. Those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, Councillor Rendles, Councillor Talty and Councillor Mackenzie. Those against? Councillor Boglari, Councillor Gollay, Councillor Hughes, Councillor, sorry? Sorry, I say that again, those against? Councillor Boglari, Councillor Gollay, Councillor Hewlett, Councillor Hughes and Councillor Bishop? And I would gather I refrain, and, Councillor Bishop?
This has been explained as clear as mud, I have no idea, I can't, I can't vote, I literally have no idea what's going on here.
All right, that makes, that makes almost two of us. Okay, so I'll say this again, that we are now trying to determine, and I now put the procedural motion to the vote if you agree with Councillor Talty's motion of dissent in my ruling on the point of order. So, those, those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, Councillor Rendles, Councillor Talty and Councillor Mackenzie. Those against? Councillor Boglari, Councillor Gollay, Councillor Hewlett, Councillor Hughes and Councillor Bishop. Councillor Gollay is abstaining? So that motion is lost.
Mayor, you didn't vote.
I don't believe I can vote? All right, that is another against then. I didn't believe I'd vote if it related to me. Councillor? All right, now, I believe, in the interests of taking some time out with what we've just dealt with, I, I move that we adjourn, I'll say councillor Talty's already moved that we seek an adjournment, all right, so, and we're waiting, that's right, we're waiting for how long?
Happy to withdraw the motion.
All right, thank you councillor Talty, the motion is withdrawn. Councillor Bishop, you had your hand up.
I was wondering if we will now return to the vote, which was in process. And regardless of the adjournment, that's what I was seeking to clarify.
All right, so we return to the original vote, which was the putting the motion 4.9 to the vote, those in favour of the officers-
Madam Chair, if I may ask through you a question of governance?
Councillor Rendles.
That when a motion is put, any motion is put, generally, it is put for those in favour of the motion, and they are counted and recorded, and then it moves to those who oppose the motion, and they're counted and recorded, and by default, anyone who doesn't vote is regarded as a negative vote, unless they're actually physically absent from these chambers. Is that correct?
Did you want to answer that, it was for governance?
Through you madam mayor, that is correct.
Following on from that, the process by which the vote for the affirmatives are put, and the count is done, and then the vote for the negatives is made, is there the opportunity for people to change their vote, if they haven't voted either actively in favour, or actively against, or is once the negatives put, the vote is closed?
Through you madam mayor, no, you only get one vote.
No, 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 the question wasn't changing the vote, my, my question is, is about the order, so we go through, for any vote, all those in favour, and a bunch of people put up their hand, and then we go, all those against, and a bunch of people put up their hand, if people haven't yet put up their hand, can they choose to be either in favour or against?
The chair calls out those in favour, and you are required to put up your hand if you are in favour of it, and if you're in the negative, when the chair calls the negative, you put up your hand in the negative.
So, if the chair is in favour, then that should be counted at the end of the positive votes, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
My, my question, if, if I may continue, because it's not about this vote, it is generally, that a moment ago, the, 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 the chair pointed out that they have the prerogative to retain the announcement of their vote to the end of the process, and indeed, as the governance has just rectified, they were on, under the assumption that they didn't need to vote, that the assumption that was just articulated, if the majority of councillors have voted in favour or against something, and the chair's vote is not a casting vote, that she may not need to vote. Now, my question is, is really about the process, that are we saying that all those in favour, you have to put up your hand, so if you don't put up your hand, and then the vote goes to all those against, you have already been counted as against? That you can't leave it, whether it's the chair, or whether it's anyone sitting around this table, can't leave it till, till the end?
Yeah, so as I understand it, you go around, as we've done for the last 14 months, we go around the table, count the affirmatives, and then we go around and count the negatives.
So, just to clarify, just to clarify that, so, so what, just so it's crystal, because I, you know, like, I'm still struggling to understand it.
I think, I think councillor Rendles, that's been asked and answered. Councillor Baglari?
I think councillor Rendles is trying to point out, the vote was taken, councillor Talty said you didn't vote, you thought you wouldn't be able to, because it was concerning you.
Point of order, you can't say what I was intending to-
Well, that's what I got from it, I was trying to have some clarity.
If I can clarify, I'm not, I'm not sure councillor Rendles, maybe this helps, are you referring to the point that we've just dealt with, or are you referring to something in the future?
No, no, I'm, I'm just referring as, as generally, because there, there appeared to be some confusion that was put in my mind, only a few minutes ago, when we were going around voting on, on the, on, on the dissent, and you expressed the view that you didn't need to vote, because it was not required, because the decision had been made, and it's not about this, it's about the process of voting, I'm just confirming, that if a vote is cast, and you don't indicate you're in the affirmative, by default, you're in the negative, and you can't leave till later, and it's not about you, it's about anyone, you can't leave till later.
Councillor?
I believe this has been asked and answered.
Thank you councillor Bishop, I agree, I do believe the question's been asked and answered, in that, for the last 14 months, that's the process that we've been dealing with, so I go around the room, in my particular case, I ask for the affirmative, and then I go around the room again, and ask for the negative, and then we determine based on the number, if the motion is carried or lost. Councillor Talty?
So, just to be clear, mayor, in that scenario, which you've just outlined, if you are voting in the affirmative, then your vote would be counted at the end of the affirmatives, before you go through the negatives.
Yes councillor Talty, that is correct.
Thank you.
A further question, if I may, madam chair, to, to the governance, as a matter of routine, when we talk to important issues, such as the, the budget, we go through a procession of, in divisional order, division one, division two, division three, division four, et cetera, and then concluding with you, is that order set in the standing orders, or is it just by custom? So, should, should we go through, like, the question, should we go through in that divisional basis, or is it, you know, everyone has their chance?
So, as I understand it, councillor Rendles, it's set by custom, correct me if I'm wrong, governance, and-
Through you madam mayor, there's, there's two issues there, I guess, so, under the standing orders, the chairperson will call those for, then those against, and until that is exhausted, so if there's only one for and one against, the debate is closed, then the mayor, the chairperson will go around and ask for the vote for and against voting. So, there's, in the standing orders, there is a procedure for for and against, for when you can talk, and when that is exhausted, all the fours are exhausted, and all the against exhausted, that's the end of the debate. Does that answer your question?
Not, it's, it wasn't about the order of discussion, it's about the order of the vote, is it more, is the order of the vote more set going, you know, one, two, three, four divisions, or yes or no, or is it more like a, like an auction, where you say, all those in favour, and then allow a moment for anyone else, and then close the votes in favour, and then move to the negatives?
So, councillor Rendles, as the chair, this is what I've been doing for the last 14 months, looking to the room, asking for those in favour, and going in order of division around the room. Does that clarify?
Which is different to the previous chair, often we didn't see the vote till the end.
All right, any other questions? So, we return to the live motion for item number 4.9, which is adoption of budget estimates and fixing of rates and charges for 2025, 2026, so I now put the motion, those in favour of the officers' recommendation, so those in favour are councillors Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Bishop, councillor Colley, Colley. Sorry, we're still at the same, aren't we? Councillor Baglari, Mitchell, Hewlett, Colley and Bishop? All right, and those against? Councillor Gole, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes and myself? Who are we missing? Sorry, and were you, which way were you voting, I didn't see your hand up councillor Rendles?
By default, from what I understood from what we discussed, if you don't put your hand up, it's a negative.
All right, so councillor Rendles is abstaining? So, it's lost? Yes, I'm against, that's lost. Okay, so the motion is lost? All right, so now I move, given the outcome of that motion, I now move that we adjourn the meeting until, I believe we have a tentative datebook for the 7th of July? We can't deal with the remaining items on the agenda, I am told, given the decision or the outcome of item number 4.9.
I have a question, mayor, why do we have a tentative booking already for a potential budget?
I don't know, that's what I've been advised, so, no we don't? No, I'm getting a shaking of head now, okay? All right, so we now, I now- Do you want me to answer? General Manager, Operational Services, Amanda Perfumi.
Thank you, chair, so councillors, there was a question asked of officers, how long it would take for us, if we were to, if this vote didn't go through, and you wanted a budget remodelled, and we said, CFO had said it would take a minimum of two weeks, so two weeks from today is the 7th of July, and I think that's the reference to the 7th of July, there is no other meeting booked, but the 7th of July is two weeks from today, that's the only thing that I can suggest about why that date might have just been closed.
We have a series of hands up, councillor Colley, Mitchell and Bishop.
Yes, thank you, chair, to the General Manager of Organisational Services, what is proposed to come back to us? We have had eight months of workshops, where, well, we can't fit eight weeks of workshops into the next two weeks, so what is going to come back to us on the 7th of July, if we do carry over until that date?
Are you happy for me to answer, ma'am?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, through your chair, well, I, I have not been given any instructions from council, so I'd be looking for direction from council about what it is that you would like us to do, so there is nothing proposed, there is no, there is nothing that officers have done on anything, as, as you say, we've, we've been working on this with you since first meeting, I think it was the 29th of October, there is nothing different to what we've already workshopped with you, so, we're in your hands, mayor.
Thank you, General Manager, I propose that we adjourn the meeting until the 7th of July, as me, as, as mentioned, given that that was raised by someone in terms of timing, in order to resolve the issues and the questions that councillors have, noting that this matter has proceeded to this point, so. We have a couple of questions, so I've got councillor Mitchell and then councillor Bishop. So, I was about to, I was about to, to put that to the vote, it was procedural motion, but you're saying, questions related to that?
Point of order, we've just had a councillor move, leave the meeting, have they requested permission to leave?
No, they did not, that was councillor Hughes leaving the room, but I was not advised.
Can I, through the chair please councillors?
Thank you.
Had a question, may I?
Councillor Mitchell?
I'm very concerned that the default for an adjournment was for two weeks' time, given the extensive work we've done together, I would like to think that we would be able to adjourn now, have whatever discussions are needed, and as you voted against the budget, madam mayor, I would expect that you would have some clear guidance for us this afternoon, in order to bring a budget forward, so I would not support the two-week adjournment.
Thank you councillor Mitchell, and as, as I've already outlined, this is a process with 11 councillors, and bearing in mind that everyone has a different opinion, councillor Bishop?
The Local Government Act states differently, mayor.
Mayor, councillors who have been here for many years, and have been through the budget process, who have deliberated, have participated and now voted, I understand new councillors in particular having some concerns and having some questions, those experienced councillors who've chosen to not proceed, I would like to ask of them what their plan is, and how soon they can put forward a proposal.
I've put forward, councillor Bishop, I've put forward through the discussions that we've had, I have proposed levies and cutting services, and that has not been supported by the majority of councillors.
Point of order, mayor.
My position has not changed, that is what I'll be offering.
Councillor Talty, point of order?
The councillor is not entitled to ask questions of councillors across the room, that is outside standing orders, all matters have to go through the chair, and the councillor himself has not voted for many budgets, in my experience, over the last 13 years, and has never supported answering his own question in the same circumstance.
Thank you councillor Talty.
Point of order, 8.1.8 accusations about another councillor.
Thank you councillor Bishop, if councillor Baglari, just-
I, I, before we move a motion to adjourn to the 7th of July, I mean, I, I have said my, my concerns, and I have given a thing, but I put my hand up then, there's been various comments said in this room today, I would like to suggest that instead of adjourning to the 7th of July at this stage, we adjourn till, that's one, what is it, one o'clock now, we adjourn- An hour? An hour? All right, have some lunch, and if need be, I, I'm not one for going into confidential when it's not needed, but maybe today it'll be needed, and we go into confidential, and in case there is some budget information which can't be said to us in public, and try and nut it out today.
Thank you councillor Baglari.
I'd like to move that, please.
Thank you councillor Baglari. All right, procedural motion, so I put that motion, adjourn, no, for procedural motion, I understand you don't need a second, so we're, so we're adjourning for one hour to have some lunch and have a break. Councillor Mitchell, do you have a problem?
Well, it was just that it was not councillor Baglari's motion, I believe you had the procedural motion, so I was just seeking that clarity, as it stood, it was two weeks, but if that's now changed to, I just want to know what I was voting for.
Yeah, I, I withdraw my-
Thank you.
My motion, yeah, so councillor Baglari has moved procedural motion, those in favour of adjourning for an hour? Thank you, that motion is carried unanimously.
All right, everyone, we have come back into the room after some discussion and a break. Now have a procedural motion to resume the meeting. So those in fa- oh, sorry, moved by councillor Bishop, seconded by councillor Talty, those in favour. Thank you councillor Hughes. Yep, that motion is carried unanimously. Okay, I confirm that we remain at item 4.9 and that the local government department has advised officers that item 4.9 remains a live report as only the initial motion was voted down. Can I have a mover and seconder of another motion on 4.9?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to propose just a slight minor change to item 4.9. Provide some words to officers. I'll move just a minor change to the officer's recommendation at 4.9 and include the following resolution as a new point 11. For officers to provide a council briefing session in the 2526 budget process in July to identify lessons learned. And councillors, that's more just to reflect some of the conversations we've had along the way in this whole process, but also during the adjournment today.
Seconded by councillor Colley. Just put the motion. Oh, so councillor Mitchell, do you have, sorry, sorry, speakers against the motion? No, any questions? No, I put the motion. Sorry, so the amendment, so to include the amendment, yeah, for the inclusion of the amendment.
No, 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 you voted for the motion.
So we're voting for the motion? Okay, so the, sorry. So, so we now have a brand new motion with the inclusion of the amendment raised by councillor Mitchell, and that is point number 11, that officers provide a council briefing session on the 2526 budget process in July to identify lessons learned. Seconded by councillor Colley. So that is the motion now moved. So councillor Mitchell, will you speak to that?
Yeah, just for clarity, just speaking to the amendment, that's speaking to the whole motion 4.9? Thank you. Well, councillors, we, yeah, very important decision before us today. We've had a lot of conversation for many months and really appreciate the conversation we've just had during the adjournment. And I'm hoping we can move forward and support this budget today in order to be truly sustainable for our city and deliver on both the operational and the capital matters before us. There are no easy outs. And I would just like to have every councillor here who has contributed meaningfully be able to move the city forward and this cohort forward for the rest of our term by supporting the motion before us today. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell, speakers against. Any questions? Councillor Mitchell, anything to sum up?
No, ma'am, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I now put the motion, those in favour. No, this is the whole, this is the, this is the new motion. So councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Hewlett, councillor Colley, councillor Bishop, sorry councillor Hughes, are you? No, okay. So just to clarify, those in favour of this motion are councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Hewlett, councillor Colley, councillor Bishop. Those against? Councillor Rendles, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes and myself. The motion is carried. We move to agenda item number 4.10, financial strategy 2025-2035. Item 410, do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Boglari, do I have a seconder? Councillor Hughes. Councillor Boglari, do you have, would you like to speak to the motion?
I should give it very good, just a bit, I'm not feeling very well and I can't even hear myself talking, I'm sorry. But it's an extremely important document. I was wondering if the CFO could talk to it, please?
Thank you, and through you Chair, thank you councillor Boglari for the opportunity to talk to our, the council's proposed financial strategy for 2025 to 2035. As we know, the document contains quite important financial information, not the, not the least of the long-term financial forecasts and associated documents which we're required to produce as part of our annual budget process. The financial strategy also steps out key considerations, whether around investment, around income opportunities and also looks to identify opportunities and weaknesses within all the different financial parameters in which we operate. It also does cover some description of the various policies, so it really is trying to be, and it really is that one-stop-shop of where we are from that long-term financial forecast as well as pinning together all the different parts of the legislation and regulations we operate under and referencing those key policies as well. Thank you.
Thank you Chief Financial Control. Speakers against? No, any questions? Councillor Bishop.
Thank you, yes. Given that this does look at our substantive commitments over the next 10 years in terms of our financial forecast, there's a large number of works in our corporate plan. Just clarification on at what point those projects get loaded in to the calculations, because we've got many projects listed in that corporate plan. And part of what I'm interested in is how do we make sure we are clear about at what point they are loaded in? Because that's the dissonance that I want to clarify.
Thank you, and through you ma'am, thank you councillor Bishop. So for the financial forecast, it is that long-term, you're correct, long-term, there's a financial forecast and we do make our annual budget decisions annually. At the time of the corporate plan, the new corporate plan being worked through and approved, that's when we would have a look again through the annual budget process to say, this is what, this is what the plan looks like in terms of cost commitments, projects. And it would be through that lens, at that point in time budget, that we would do that. And of course, every year we come back, you know, refresh our annual budget, but also refresh that long-term 10-year forecast.
Yeah, just a strong request that we look back at our corporate plan as it was proposed and look at what we've delivered as we consider our new corporate plan and make sure that we align our expectations with our budget and make sure that we can afford those things that we propose in that corporate plan. I'm concerned that we're moving in a direction where there's a disconnect. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, councillor Boglari, would you like to sum up?
Oh, no, just, sorry, it is an extremely important document and it is in every monthly financials as well. You know, we look back at the financial strategy to see how we're going. On page 20, it talks about the key risks and issues and some of these I talked about previously. And we have to consider this, when, these risks, when we are approving a budget. So going forward, I think a lot of lessons have been learnt and we'll be looking at it even more diligently. I hope Sandra, under your guidance.
Thank you councillor Boglari. And I now put the motion, those in favour of the officer's recommendation. Moving to agenda item number 14, 11, adoption of the due date period for 2025-2026 quarterly rating. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Hughes, seconded by councillor Boglari. Councillor Hughes, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, this is one I normally speak to because it's so important for families as we set our budgets and that Christmas period, we know that come November and most importantly February as we come back from school. So please be aware they are quarterly, even though you get the rates a month before, but when they're actually due. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Hughes. Speakers against? Any questions? Thank you councillor Hughes, anything further to say?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I put the motion, those in favour. Thank you, that is carried, noting that all in favour, noting that councillor Mackenzie is out of the room. All right, I understand councillor Mackenzie is ready to dial in. Can I have a mover and seconder? Moved by councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Talty. Put the, pardon? Yeah, so the motion, the motion is to allow councillor Mackenzie to dial in online, so I put them, put them. To join the meeting by teleconference, the exact wording. Can I, those in favour? Sorry, it is to allow councillor Mackenzie to join the meeting by teleconference. Councillor Hewlett, indication, yep. So that's all in favour, noting that councillor Mackenzie is in the room. And she is now online.
Thank you.
So returning to the due dates. Moving to the final agenda item, which is for 12 of the operational plan 2025-2026. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Boglari. Councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you ma'am. In adopting the rates, fees and charges today, this allows us to deliver to the community the services and strategies that are present here in the operational plan. So, and this reflects the themes aligned in the corporate plan. So whether your, your pet project, your pet strategy aligns with economic development, whether it be looking after our natural environment or whether it be on making our organisation stronger and more efficient, then this is where you go to have a look at what are the catalyst projects and initiatives that look across this next financial year. And this is mostly what we've enabled today through adoption of our budget. So I look forward to delivering these services and strategies to our community.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. Speakers against? Any questions or comments? All right, I note the operational plan, I note its inception in 2020 and the, that it's presented in totality for all of the programmes, projects listed. And I note that the budget currently is tied to the delivery as outlined by councillor Mitchell. I am not in favour of some of the projects currently listed in that document, noting that it was previously drafted and adopted in the prior term. I now put the motion, those in favour of the officer's recommendation. That is carried by councillor Boglari, sorry, Mitchell, those in favour is councillor Boglari, Mitchell, Gole, Hewlett, Rendles, Talty, Hughes, Bishop and myself. Those against? Sorry, councillor Mackenzie online.
Against.
So councillors Colley and Mackenzie against, that motion is carried. Thank you for everyone for participating today. We now have a budget that is carried. Councillors, please ensure your attendance sheet has been logged in diligent boards. Finally, again, I'd like to thank everyone that listened along online and for everyone who participated today and their input. And again, thank you very much to the finance team, the chief financial controller and the executive leadership team for their diligence in working through this long process. And now to clear the meeting closed at 2:47pm on Monday, the 23rd of June, 2025.